Good evening, Meramec. This is the March 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting, Meramec Miller's district. So I wanted to start by saying that public participation is offered by webinar. You can join the webinar by going to the MBDwater.org website and downloading today's agenda. There's a link on there so you can join the Zoom webinar if you want, or you can call 646-876-9923 and enter the webinar ID 875-89212694. As a courtesy, Meramec TV is recording this meeting and will be posted to their website at a later date and typically runs on cable channel 20 in the future as well. So I'll call a meeting to order at 5:00 PM. And we have three commissioners present here. John Lyons to my left, Ken Ayers to my right, myself, Don Preventure. Both Wolf and Paul have been excused from tonight's meeting. So we still have a quorum here in the room and we're gonna skip the one item on the agenda here and go to where are we here? Go to item number three, which is the appointment of Brian McCarthy as the pro tem moderator for the annual meeting coming up on March 28th, right? Because the elected moderator will not be available for that meeting. So luckily, Brian has been the moderator on a number of public forums in the past, including MBD. So Brian's here with us tonight. And there's something in the packet here that we officially need to approve some. Trying to remember if there was something in here or not. Okay.
I'm moved. Second.
All right, motion by Ken, second by John to approve Brian McCarthy as the pro tem moderator. Brian, any words? Is there anything you want to offer to us since you're here? No objections?
Just that one night, we got it.
Well, I definitely wanted to extend our appreciation for you to do this for us in our absence of the actual moderator. So with all being said, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye, great. That passes 300. No extension. Absolutely.
Thanks for volunteering.
Thank you for covering. We appreciate that.
Any questions for me, I guess?
I don't think so. As far as maybe we go over now about the reading of the Warren articles, is that typically?
You line them up and then if I have any questions, so you'll get me a packet with everything.
Right, but we talked about it, I said it's up to Mark after we had the meeting, that Brian was gonna read the Warren article on the explanation and then questions would be directed to you as the chair and you basically wanted to say, I'll take that one.
I guess one thing I will mention is that both the school district and town have gotten away from reading verbatim.
Really?
They're just saying that's great.
Sorry.
I'm not sure if that's possible. Don't look into it. It just makes the meeting go a lot quicker.
I'm sure it would, yeah.
We're there for an hour anyway, but.
How about?
Because if maybe you could check with someone to see if it actually has to be read at the meetings. I mean, because the other two were SP2 and this is.
Yeah, I'm surprised that.
Right, we're not.
So, okay, so it might be a different.
Because no one likes reading those things.
The last one is like extremely long.
Yeah.
So it's just something that I ran across as I was, you know, doing the school district one. I was like, well, okay.
You know, that would be good to know.
Yeah, I mean, especially everybody has.
Everyone should have a copy and, yeah.
So just, that's.
All right, that's good. We'll look into that. And if not, then we'll just do it.
We'll do it.
We said, yeah.
All right.
Okay, just have a glass of water because that last one's long. It's like a page long all by itself.
You know, if I forgot my glasses work, everything's off, okay? All right.
Great, thank you a lot, Brian. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Let's rise for the pledge of allegiance. We're really trying to get you out of here quick, that's why. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. So get that covered. We did the roll call. So next is Michelle Holton, Finance and Human Resources Review.
With fiscal year being through February, we're eight months into the year at almost 67% complete. The revenues, we have most of our main water revenue accounts coming in above 70% of budget, which resulted in an overall revenue at 76.9% of budget. We continue to see the interest income much higher than previous few years. That was with some of the negotiations we did with TD Bank. And also the mainline extensions, 40408 and 40413, the entrance fees for some of the new communities that have come on. It's really hard for us to determine when they're gonna come on. It can fluctuate by six months to two years and then even more than that.
Kind of kind of up to when the developer wants to move forward with the wall, I guess, right? So, yeah, okay.
And for expenses, they're coming in at 60% of budget. And the notes and the circumstances relating to all the expenses that are above budget are in the budget first as actual report, which is the next. And we still are seeing for this report, we're still seeing the penitcheck usage is causing our electricity, heating, fuel and chemicals to be lower than budget.
That's interesting.
At this point, we're going to, where we have we'll have 2 and
2 and 9.
2 and 9. Are we anticipating usage throughout the rest of this fiscal year? Not using penitcheck.
Right, you know, we haven't been using penitcheck for
Since November.
Yes, since November.
Oh, okay, I thought it went into December.
Couple days we have to turn it on, but other than that, it's been minimal.
Okay, so the non-budgeted expense for that, we took the first 25,000 for purchase of water. Yes, purchase of water. We had budgeted 25,000. Our first fuel bills added up to $24,496. And then we have 104,000 that I have below the line in other expense, a non-budgeted expense since the monies that we've put into the non-capital account for purchase, purchase of water. We have that money in there to cover what we're spending on penitcheck. So last year, we kind of waited till we saw the end of the year, saw how our revenues and expenses fell. But this year with the refinance, the PFAS remediation loan, we're likely gonna have to look into the non-capital reserves for that expense.
Before you go on, yeah, I'm sorry. He was just gonna ask if we have questions. The very first page, the year, the of the report, the table says PY, percent of budget. Is that past year, previous year?
Prior year.
Prior year, okay. I just, I thought it was. I wanted to make sure.
Yes, we're very, we're very close. Our net ordinary income at this point between the two years is only a difference of $29,000.
Yep, wow, okay.
And we did have a rating last year, but that wasn't until October.
Right.
Anything else on?
Anybody have any questions on anything?
On the, the next page, the comparison of revenues, actual versus budget. I had mentioned that we're looking into 40200, which is the water sales for mercantile. We're still working with UMS to get some reporting that's gonna break things out properly for us. We're just seeing such a rise where it's already at basically 100% of budget. We're just wanting to make sure that we can account for the reasoning behind it. So we are still working with UMS on that. And the only two accounts that aren't noted, 40409 for hydrant hookup and merchant sales. They are both very small numbers, but that's why their percentage, if they happen to have a bit more than we budgeted for them, the percentages from budget will be very high. So we just simply had some additional hookups than we expected. In merchandise sales, we just usually put in about the 2750 and let it be what it ends up being. So those two, it's just as I said, both because of the low value of the budget. If it's over or if it's off, it can be a very large percentage number, but it doesn't represent a lot of. Does anyone have any questions on the revenues, actual versus budget?
Questions, anyone?
Nope.
And for the expenses, actual versus budget. Couple on the first page, 60100, telephone and cable, just slightly over the percentage, but running, running a bit high, but we added some services. And we also had to add some capacity at treatment. And then for the diesel fuel, we have a description here. It must have fallen off, so I'll make sure that gets added back on. But the diesel fuel is running high because we had had that instance where we didn't have electricity and we had to run generators at seven and eight for an extended period. Are there any particular accounts that you have a question on or would like us to look into further on the first page?
Nope, nothing on the first page.
Okay. The second page account, 7010, the lead in copper service line project is what's driving that to be over budget, but that has a a due date. Now is that directly from the state? Yes. The lead copper project?
They were even granted.
Okay. And then also, we had moved around some of the R and M meters budget because we had redone some of the account titles to make it clearer for everyone. So those are, those are marked there as an account 70040, that some of the budget monies were moved up here from the account 70450. And we also see 70400, R and M mainlines. And then we also the mainlines, then we're also seeing that entrances were up. And as we noted with the revenues, those, those are some of the new communities that came on. So these are the associated expenses coming on with those. And it's noted for the sampling that there are new guidelines. So we have additional sampling to do. And account 70700 is at almost 188% of budget and that is the new generator service. So we hadn't budgeted at the time that we created the budget, but we have moved on to a generator service, which has been going well. Any other specific accounts on?
I actually have one on the postage. Let's see, pretty big increase, you know, this sort of postage. Is there any way maybe we're getting more better with the website and then, you know, better pay if we can maybe set up an email list billing or what?
Actually, when we get to monthly billing, I was wanting to touch on some of the action items and that's something that I'm gonna go over there.
Okay.
Yes, most definitely. We are, we're wanting to push our campaigns because we're not gonna have to pay paper authors for their printing, for the postage. Loft box will be less if it's automatically the ACHs. So while we will be talking with UMS even further, they're doing some research on their campaigns. Those that have been most successful, what percentages they see conversion and conversion time happen over. So we're looking into all that. Any other questions?
Anything, John?
Let's say if it gets to a point where you've kind of peed on getting people to sign up for it. It might include a postage paid return card. So for me, like to have to pull up my laptop, go on your website, put my email in. It's not something I'm gonna prioritize in my day, but if I can just check something off and shove it back in the mailbox, I will.
And you have to find your email address and your cell phone number if you want text messages too.
Yeah, I would do the email address.
It would have to be something in an envelope rather than a postcard?
Yes. I was just looking at line, what is this, 70550? Yeah, looks like this is, is a note here about $42,000 for replacement pump. I guess we had two lightning strikes at what was that, well, four or five, right?
Yes.
Did both of those strikes blow out the pump?
So we lost lost well, the well four pump. We lost the card for, there's a for our skater that we had to replace as well. Five, we didn't lose the pump, but we lost another card.
Really? So just two questions I had here were, should we maybe look at lightning protection, surge protection with that? I don't know what's involved with that. I've heard of it before, but never really.
We have inquired about it and we actually do have surge stuff on there.
Really?
Lightning charge that covers anything from the ground up. It's the pumps that are on the ground, they're not covered. Is the only reason?
Yeah, I was kind of wondering, because I know clients of mine that had well pumps covered. So is there any other, what is this all Primex?
It is.
So, yeah. Because I'd say maybe we should look for a different insurance company, but that goes far beyond. That's everything we're insured for through Primex pretty much, right?
Well, it's, it's our liability.
Yeah.
Property, the automobiles and our workers' comp.
Yeah.
So the benefits are health trust, Primex is this. And we have received, we have received a note quite a while back. A gentleman who was part of a municipality work group had said that he, he was a higher up in insurance. And he had a friend who said he really, you know, he really wanted to know how much Primex was giving us as far as value. And he really took it, he took it for, I mean, it took him probably about six weeks. And they came back and they said that they were really surprised that the coverage we get and for all their sort of added services, the, the pricing is far more than fair and it's, it's decent. But when we started looking into water specific, that's when you start to get, well, we'll cover you, but you know, the rates really you know, become daunting.
It just seems like, you know, the two things that are in place, the insurance and the surge protection both didn't work out for us in this case. So I don't know. I don't know, I just.
Yeah, you mentioned on the pump, was there a pump?
Was it a pump that was, I think, oh, yeah.
Were they also completely below ground?
Oh, yeah, it was a well, well pump, yeah. I don't know who they were insured by, but I remember them telling me they had this issue and they got reimbursed. So maybe I should find out who they're with, but I don't, I don't see us changing all of our insurance. I'm just wondering, you know, if you could, if, I'm sure any insurance company, if you call them and say, can you give us, can you add this to the policy? Maybe they'll just say, no, we don't cover that, or we cover that at a certain price. Didn't know, they just outright refused if we asked that question, you know?
It's not specific. Anything below ground policy, it's a section that says anything below the ground was not covered. The name was a lot later from it, the person that I was working with, she was going to upper ups and trying to get, this is for the first one. And then the second one, denial as well.
All right. I don't know. Maybe there's better surge protection or something. I don't know.
The question was asked about surge protecting.
Yeah.
Protection. And we currently have, it's not always it helps, but it's not 100% either. So, but I could all inquire some more about it.
Yeah, I just, I'm curious. Have we hit other lightning issues in the past?
We have. And I, and I want to say four or five is what we've had in the past as well.
Really? Seems to be like susceptible over there. All right. It just kind of stuck out to me and I, I was wondering, you know, those two questions. And what do we got here? Sorry. Or R and M roofs, roofs, 70600.4. This says, there's a note here about still need to purchase for seven and eight.
He's siding everything?
Yeah, we went out for.
One of the well houses or something?
Yeah, for well seven pump house.
Okay.
It doesn't look like the roof needs to be done. We did go out and look at that. We had a contractor come out and he's gonna give us a price on so the lower part of the building's concrete or a block and then you have, you have a part is the wood. Siding that and painting of the block. That we don't have that yet, but we asked them for a quote on the roof as well. We got out there and looked at it and it actually looks fine to me, but.
All right.
He also have leftover shingles from the treatment plant that he maybe have to use.
Oh. Good. Yeah, I just, I just wanted to make sure we weren't talking about a new roof on the treatment plant.
Oh, no, no, no.
Which is like a year or two old. That would be more than 12 grand, I'm sure too, but, all right. Okay, no, that's good. That's, that's, that's all I had on that page.
Okay, and the last page, basically from 9200 down is the principal and interest on our loan. So those are all type. Those are just simply when, when they're due, you'll see the fluctuation. We also, as we mentioned last month, are gonna have $176,000 that we have to pay to DRA. It's for PFAS remediation loan. The time we spent before that new loan became effective. So we had 176,000 in the previous loans that isn't in the time scale that's covered by the PFAS remediation grant and loan fund. So we have to pay the 176 to play those balances by the end of the year to allow us to be completely eligible for all the benefits we're getting from the PFAS remediation loan. So we've been in touch with Amy Russo who's handling, handling that. So we'll coordinate that with her. And then today was 2 and 9. Substantial condition, yes, or?
Yeah, just take the it's gonna be a surprise for later. Yeah, 2, well, it was open. 9 won't be substantial because we don't have the, the fire yet for that. So that's gonna be, we're given a partial, partial, if that makes sense.
Get approval for that, yeah?
No, we don't have the cables, the wires for well nine. For what? The funding and everything? Then, yeah, everything's approved. And yeah, well, well nine was approved.
Cool.
Yeah, that was.
That was an add all, it was a project several weeks ago. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just a fact here, simply on Friday, keep that clean today, so.
That's good. They gave us full approval of 1,000 gallons a minute, by the way, so.
Sweet.
Yeah, so we're, we're in good shape.
How many per day is that?
14, 1.4 million per each well. Because we're gonna get 1,000 from well two and 1,000 well nine. So that'll be 2, 8 million, those flows at 1,000 gallons per minute per well. Which is, yeah. Yeah, it's good. You know, we kind of went ahead with the treatment plant without having 9 approved, expecting we would, so.
We, we do would get it some, yeah, it's some flow.
It was, it was a low risk, but it's still a risk, but.
Yeah, I remember. Great.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
Happy spring.
Yeah. And it is, it's 524. It's starting officially spring right now.
Does anyone have any other questions on the final page of the budget to go compare us?
Don't have anything, you guys?
For following that, it's just a similar report without the descriptions. And after that is the, the previous year comparison. Does anyone have either previous year or the month by month for this fiscal year? Any areas you want to go over or questions?
All right. I'm all set.
Okay, on the bank balances, are gonna notice 10170 for the treatment plants. You'll notice as the balance has come down because we're redoing the paperwork to move to the new loan. There's gonna be some transfers from operating the coverage contract here. And then once we get the reimbursement from DES, we will replenish that. So right now, I'm just putting in a little bit about what's ever due every two weeks.
You mentioned that last month too, right? Because that was, that, that's where the number really dropped out. Right?
Okay, and I know that action items are further down the agenda, but there are there are three here, but I think basically that includes me, but
Yeah, you want to cover those.
Different reasons. They will likely be able, but I wanted to go over that with everyone and also make the note. After going through our budget process, we now need to start our rate discussion. We need to work on starting it earlier, but our rate discussion for the April meeting. What we're doing for, for rates as ideally July 1st, we do it as a.
We can do it at the end of the year, yeah. Is Underwood involved with that?
At this point, no, that was a question I had to run if we wanted them to do an update like they do. They had done just sort of a refresh of current numbers last year. $4,700 was the engineering fees for building everything current. So we could move up again. Megan has reached out, Megan from Underwood has reached out. She's been handling it with me the whole time she's been here and Keith, of course.
So you'll have something in April for that, you think? Or at least a.
We'll definitely have a plan. And some of the major numbers. I do have to get with Megan tomorrow and see how her schedule, how her schedule looks. And also she provides me every year, you know, what they do so Kristen and I can spend some time going through it too, and she has to push it out at all, but she's usually very good about getting us some numbers that we can at least start the conversation.
Right. And with, the monthly billing is gonna happen the next fiscal year in July, right? If it passes at the annual meeting?
Well, that's what we have. Right now, we have Amy learning a new meter system. She is getting the backflow billing up and going. And we're going to have a rate increase. So we were thinking of perhaps the monthly billing at a little bit later date. Ideally, we'd like to do them both July 1st, the rate increase and the monthly billing. We're just trying to see if it really can all come together as a July. If it really can all come together as a July first. Um, so. That's just something that we started talking about the beginning of last week. Um.
So are there's uh, any specific action items you?
Uh, yes, well, um. I just want to mention the rate discussion for April and then also. Um, either April or May, so I would like to get our two readings in by the end of the year. Uh, we need to create a fund balance and capital reserve fund policy or policies. For where we want to keep our maintaining roughly. Our unassigned fund balance. So those are the funds that we have. Um, if we had a major incident that we needed help with our operation. Expenses. Um. And the capital reserves, looking at the different C I Ps. And what our goals are. So a. Lot of the communities that. Have leaned to the policy that they have is setting a priority for when something goes below and having a timeframe. To get back there. So say you wanted. Fund balance at two million dollars and one year you drop to. You know, one point eight. And then they would have a plan that that would now be a. A priority to get that back to where it needs to be. So it might mean that a capital reserve. That's already. Sufficially funded. Might not get. The next year's contribution. So it's, it's just how we're. Going to all agree upon that and what system we're going to use. And it's something that we, we should have.
So would that? Would that be related to, um? I think right now, from what I remember is we had a goal funding. Was it seven hundred thousand dollars a year into? All of our capital reserves?
Hundred and one forty, it's seven hundred distribution, one forty treatment, I believe, at one point.
But I got, I have.
Then we added. Capital reserve accounts and non capital reserve.
I don't, I don't think it changed. I have six hundred thousand in my mind, but I don't know if that's.
I mean, that was a goal. I don't know.
It was the eight four and then.
Yeah, the number, that number does ring a bell eight forty.
Yeah.
I think it was on the um, the C I P, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just have to look back.
So you're saying you want, we want to assign. More capital reserves or, or? Kind of parse out that seven hundred thousand into. Different category.
It might be that we have to look at what we have going on for the capital reserves to see. Um, you know, we didn't have non capital reserve for purchasing water in O and L.
Yeah.
For G A C plants, um, in the past, um, we didn't have extraordinary legal. Now we do. So it just might be that, you know, kind of really looking at. Any. Issues we have going on in a particular area. Um, as well as keeping the C I P, you know, on the horizon. So that, you know, our fun, because our funding, it isn't just having the money there to pay some of it. Um, which it does, but it allows us to match. It, it allows us to qualify. For a lot of the loans, very. Beyond reasonable loans, um, and grants by just showing that we're financially strong. So that actually really helps us. Um, and the loan options that we've had compared to bonding. Has, has really been. You know, significant as far as. The rates. The bearing of the rates. Um, and also with the loan. We get re, uh, well, we're fortunate that we. We have cash flow to get reimbursed. But with bonding, you get all the money. Start paying all like the interest is.
Hmm.
Fix in. Right away where we're just getting a piece of help with the loan fees.
Okay.
So it'll be. An assigned fund balance, that's sort of our true emergency fund. A scenario happened that we needed. Funds to be able to pay operating expense for. Two months, three months. So we've got to figure out what we, I have some information from the industry. Um, and it is not the same as a municipality because. There are certain things in a municipality that. The fund balance doesn't have to. Take into account.
Okay.
So there are certain things that we don't have the money, that doesn't happen. But for us, twenty four seven water always happens. So we're capital intensive. So you'll hear about. Uh, five to eighteen percent is what communities putting capital reserves. That's recommended by. You know, D R A or different entities, New Hampshire Municipal Association. We are standalone waterworks. So while anyone who has wastewater. Um, potable water is having to have that department contributing to the overall, but then they have a lot of other departments that. Either. What they're doing would be adjusted down, or like I said, put on hold for a time. But for us.
Yeah, we don't have that luxury.
Yeah.
So you're, basically you want to get that squared away because it's going to impact the rated, whatever rate adjustment we're looking at making, right? If we need to put. We're going to need to try to. Bring the rates in line to fund those capital reserves at the end of the next fiscal year. Is that kind of where you're coming from?
Well, we don't have to fund them. We don't have to fund them all. I mean, we do have to get solid on. C I P, um. And what happens? When we don't make our goal, because then. If we set a number. Don't put that in. We've got to think about the fact of adding it on to the another year or another few years down the road.
Yeah.
Um, and what impact? That will have. So we, we really have to take a look at the C I P, um. The industry information, I would say averages from two to six months. Of budget. The operating budget. Um. And I've talked with Keith. From, from Underwood.
Yeah.
Um, as well, and he said, that's, you know, information that he's, he's seen also. So I'll, I'll write some of that. Um, and then we'll just kind of see where everyone, where everyone stands. That might be one that. Since we haven't had a lot of discussions on it, that maybe, you know, it takes us two or three reads, but. It's something that we should.
Okay.
Get in place our walls and then also, as I said, to deal with. When we come short of them. What takes priority, how long we want to take, et cetera.
Okay.
And just quickly on the action, I guess, um. We. The P T O, typically the sick. I know that Wolf. Was. Very focused on. What we're doing here. That's when I was wanting to table just till. He's back in April.
Yep. Yep. That's fine.
Um, June team. Um, the staff is leaning towards keeping it as an observance. Uh, for this particular coming June team. Um, June third. Excuse me, June team. Um. What I was going to do is just. Share the details of some observances and events that are going around in that area. So the, uh, staff was happy with that. Uh, twenty four states and the District of Columbia have made it a state holiday. But even that, there's some fluctuation in how they're truly defining. How they're honoring it. If it's truly, it's not that that's a flat out paid day off. Um, across the board on those, but for many of us. Um, so we figured we just do a check back in. Um. After this year. Um, and we can kind of circle back to that. And as far as the monthly billing. Um, Amy was out today, so I'm going to get with her and Kristen this week. Um, and to lay out any major endeavors they have coming up in the next. Few months, um, and just see. What is really possible for us? To do, and if we can't do them both July one, then. What's plan B, uh, for the monthly billing? We've talked with. Um. U M S about their conversion gains. As far as Penn had brought up, just because every person we can get on an E bill. And doing an automatic A C H, you know, we're not bringing their bill, we're not doing the postage. And because they're doing the automatic A C H, we don't have to even deal with the lockbox. We get an automated file that we just upload. So that's definitely the way that we. We want to go, um. As of. Three fifteen. Uh, we have eleven point. Four percent or eight hundred and sixty three customers. Who have simply converted over from just our, our talking with them. We have it on the website. We have flyers. The outside door, we have flyer, uh, flyers at the, uh, foyer. And whenever we can take the opportunity, um. You know, we do. Try to let people know all the new options that we have, but that's our ideal. We're not going to get everyone to do that. Um, but they're going to provide us with some campaign materials that they've found. Um, helpful and they actually. They'll share, there's a couple of campaigns, they'll even share costs with us. To, to promote the plan, um.
Can I see something? And I don't know if you'll know the answer, but I notice when I go on to my bill pay, like some of the larger bills have. An auto pay button right next to them.
Have a.
Auto pay button.
Okay.
Like, I can get my bill electronically. And have it paid automatically through the bank.
Okay.
I don't know what drives that. I don't know what you have to do to get one of those buttons.
Okay.
But that'd be pretty cool.
No, definitely. Um, easier the better for sure.
So have there been notices in the bills, the actual paper bills about? The my M V D and. All that stuff, right?
Yes. Um, and we, we, as I said, we've got it on the website, we've put it on. Facebook, we have, we got a. A bin for the outside door. If you're anyone dropping off a check, you can see that. You don't have to do that.
Yes.
Push notifications to. Yep, we have the, um. Text and. Email.
Email, I don't know about text.
Yes.
Okay, did you get, you got one? Give notifications there, but I don't know.
Yeah, but you know, I'm. I might be, I believe we did, but I might be confusing it with. I get the text saying my bill stays as well.
You do?
Okay. I go over.
Is that, what's that through? Is that through, um, by the push notifications or is that?
Um. My M V D.
Oh. Alright, I didn't know that. I thought it just had email. I didn't know it had text. That's pretty cool.
I will go over where it was out.
See, I would, you know, keep putting the, um, push notification out. I don't know, monthly or a couple of months at a time or something? Maybe. I don't think it's being too, uh. Bother some, but it's just. Every month or two. Cause. Probably going to pick up some people every time you send one of those out. I don't know how many people are on the push notification. Database anyways, but.
If they signed up with their email address. You could go on before you could sign up for your notifications for my M V D.
Yeah.
So we actually have almost three thousand customers. Out of almost seventy six hundred billable locations. Who are signed up for the M V D portal. Now. What we're try, we're trying to get some more layered information from U M S. We've been working with them as far as, you know, getting that broken down to of those, how many? You know? How many are doing? Um, you know, E bill only, et cetera. So we're with them on those, those kind of reports, but just with. Very basic. Pushing on my M V D. I remember we've got the sign out front. Um, like I said, we've been almost three thousand.
That's about.
Seventy six hundred.
I couldn't read that sign, I'm sorry. Well, in here, I just happened to notice, I'm like. Wonder what that says?
Um. So we're, we're talking, we talked with, uh, U M S, we're talking with Paper Graphics. Um. And I'm also looking into the, the return envelope. Um, idea. There. And we're going to just, once we can, um, break down our numbers better, we can. Actually refine the cost too, because we already have things that are going to take the cost. Down. Um, so I, you know, we're going to get info from U M S. Uh, we'll be able to. You know, start hopefully with, you know. Their most successful campaigns and repeat that, um, and just. See how we can bring. Bringing the numbers down.
I think there's one in here about, um, an action item about, um. What is it? Trying to find where it is here.
Five and sixteen nine, whether two ended listed, sure.
Five and fifteen nine.
Yeah, P T O and June team.
So.
And then we wanted to touch on monthly bill.
Thought there was something in here about a discount if. A customer.
Oh, that's something too.
Oh, yeah.
I do have some information on that.
Okay. Implementing a discount for paperless billing. Maybe is more of an incentive. But, okay, I did, I just pointed out, I didn't.
Okay, I actually, I, yeah, I hadn't realized it was on my, I was. With Amy about that one.
Alright. Questions?
So we'll have some more detailed information on the monthly. Um, and we can review the P T O when Wolf is here, and I would say early next year. Um, we can revisit June team. Or at any time, if anyone. Has an option.
Yeah, I mean, I think. What I said last time is like, maybe if, um. You want to trade another holiday or maybe trade a, um. What do you get? Three floaters?
Three personal ones.
So I mean, I don't know if you want to trade something for that, but. I, I wasn't inclined to approve a whole new paid holiday on top of what everyone already has. But if you wanted to substitute something.
I worked away a floating holiday. So now I have to take the June nineteen.
Oh, you have, that's what happened to you?
I had, yep, they took it away.
So you might.
Yeah, the majority of us at my work, we wish to keep. Our floating holiday.
Yeah.
You know? So.
So I wouldn't want to, that's why I think we put back on you guys to figure out how you want to handle it. And I, that was just my position, maybe, you know, as a whole commission, we haven't. You know, made a decision one way or the other, but that's, that's just my. Opinion.
That was kind of the general.
Yeah.
Yeah. And also too, they want to see, um, as it rolls out to different places. See ideas. Um, I originally had done. A survey, which there was a lot of response to a few months ago. Um, so. Think once we get. Asked this student team, they'll do it again. Because they're, you know, there are those who did it, but then there are those who, you know, it's going to pass again. And they have discussions, particularly if they have any collective bargaining, but, um, just some groups have. Draw forth discussions on it and are going, you know, back and forth, so.
I guess if you're going to be reaching out, you might ask them. If that was a whole new holiday, paid holiday added on top of everything they already had. Or did they swap something?
Okay.
That would be important for me to know.
Okay.
To kind of get an idea what's. Swap. Right? Right? Alright.
Yeah, and that'll be New Hampshire based.
Okay.
It's the name, um, the finance truth. Very good.
Alright.
Does anyone have any other questions?
I'm good. You guys?
Yeah.
Good stuff.
Okay.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, so that's, um.
Do we get Underwood?
Yeah, so it's number one we got, right? Oh, that is number, we are back to number one.
Yeah.
On number one. Alright, so. Commissioners to receive an update from Underwood Engineers. Commissioners to receive an update from Underwood Engineers. We got Peter Pitts this there. How you doing, Peter?
Hey, good.
Good. I put something to ESR, is it? The packet, so you can now go off those.
Where are those in the packet of the uh?
Fish, yeah, first, yeah, as soon as you move the uh, the. Don't let there, next page.
Page just for minutes. The summer meeting that those discussion about these two ESRs previously.
Okay.
Pete, in the minutes, we said seventy thousand dollars for AR and thirty thousand dollar for Mitchell Woods.
Yeah, we had that seventy five and twenty five.
Yeah, it's still the same total, it's just.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so these two. Looks like you got ESR seventy and seventy one.
Correct.
Uh, artificial recharge is seventy, I'm gonna take that one first. Um. Seventy five. Didn't, didn't we vote already to move forward with? What am I thinking of?
You agreed to move forward with the AR and, and Mitchell Woods, but there wasn't a vote, so we could just have these.
Alright, so I'm thinking the last meeting, it was the um anion resin evaluation. Okay.
Was that with the Emery?
Uh, polishing with Underwood.
Yeah, okay.
It would do one of, to see how much it would entail to.
Right.
But yeah, but this also goes along with it when Jamie did the whole demonstration, uh, his thing where we're showing. Uh.
AR?
Yeah.
Yeah, that this part of it.
Well, this is just for Underwood to evaluate more of the um. All of the infrastructure associated with it, right?
Correct.
But Jamie still has another piece coming to us.
Oh, okay.
Be getting that next, next month for that.
Oh, so they're not, they're not together, they're separate.
Two different jobs still, um, the, the board only partially approved his whole um proposal because of. Wanted to approve the preliminary end of it, so.
Right. Yeah, so Jamie's more in the hydro geological groundwater study. Underwood's more on this, all the infrastructure, price that out. Alright, so this, this is the first time we're seeing the seventy and seventy ones, is that correct?
It is, but you've seen your proposals, these would be actual ESRs.
Okay.
But this is more a check.
The contract, the other one was proposal.
Okay.
Okay, so this wasn't in our original packet over the weekend, right?
I don't see anything in here that shows what the need is and what the expected outcome is. We're supposed to approve like going forward with these things, is that what this is?
Yeah, we're looking, yeah, we were talking about, you know, proceeding along and coming up with um, you know. A more defined project and a more accurate cost for uh each one of the options. And then the uh artificial recharge, you know, we are to be investigating, you know, the um. You know, getting what we need to do to get the intake into the river and crossing the railroad and a lot of those types of uh. You know, sort of issues that we are taking. I don't wanna, you know, it's somewhat of a, a little bit of a stab of, of a cost on those things and stuff like that. And what's needed for permitting and that type of stuff. Uh, this will be formally, you know, going through that and getting a better idea. Document and I'll let down a little report.
Yeah, so you're gonna be contacting EverSource on the power, location. Coordination, railroads.
Yeah, that's gonna have to be going down there, so I don't know if we have, you know, are we gonna be extending that from the um. To well, four, five, you know, building areas, that the easiest way to go, or then when we do get to the railroad tracks, does that have to be under the railroad tracks too and that type of thing, so. We're looking at that. I know we did, we looked at that with a project we did out in Jaffrey, and is it better to have that as a primary? Uh, feed line down there or secondary? If it's a secondary feed line, then that's really your responsibility if there's any, you know. Um, you know, damage to those lines and it's, and it's nice to, you know, put those underground. Um, you know, if it's above, if above ground or if it's a primary feed, then, then. Power company are responsible for that, but then they have certain requirements and that type of thing that they'll push you for, so. We're gonna look at those different options with it.
Yeah, so this is not like very critical infrastructure. I would think maybe it's a savings of uh above ground wiring, if that's allowed.
It could be, yeah, that's exactly it, yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's a good point. I wasn't thinking of that.
Yeah, because it's not, it's not an emergency situation for you to have that. Intake out of the um, out of the river.
Right.
But if it does, if it does develop into more, you know, in the, in the future, if you do end up going, you know. You know, whatever, you know, way distant future, you decide to go surface water, you know, have a surface water plant, you have that as an intake or something like that, then it. Then it becomes more of a critical thing and it might, might be nice to have on the ground.
Well, so it sounds like you can provide us with a cost comparison of the two options here, is that?
Yeah, we're gonna look at that, yeah.
Cause I agree with what you're saying, but also agree, could be deferred later if that was the case.
Yeah. And at least underneath the railroad, I don't know if it makes sense if, you know, if we're gonna have somebody out there. Doing some kind of uh, you know, drilling underneath the railroad to get the water line under there, it makes sense while they're there that, you know. Might make you sense even, you know, even if we go above ground, it might make sense just to put the.
Yeah, the sleeve through.
The sleeve in there, then you can always use it later, you know, so that, that, you know, that might be an option too.
I gotta be honest with you, I'm, I'm more inclined to see where we're at with, we've done so much lately. I mean.
Yeah.
If we don't have enough water, we have the ability to purchase it from Penachuk. And according to the studies that you've done, that's the cheapest option there is. Why wouldn't we just do that?
I don't think it is the cheapest option.
Yeah, cause we are looking at that as the sort of the, you know, the interim for the next, you know, three to five years or so, right?
So this, this has the lowest O N M after the capital expense. But. The artificial recharge, it's the lowest capital, um, it's the lowest operational cost. So when you're really looking out twenty years. That's where it makes more sense to do it. It's probably a higher upfront cost. Uh, and then buying water from Penachuk. That's much higher operational expense. That was on those graphs that we looked at.
Told us we're saving all kinds of money, because we're buying money from, water from Penachuk. Why is it on higher operational cost?
That's what those graphs were suggesting, it, the, one of the prior meetings from a couple of months ago.
Yeah, I remember the graphs. We see them a couple of times. I thought Penachuk was one of the lowest ones.
Well, we had an emergency rate as well. That's what. So that wouldn't.
Oh, that's true.
Well, this is before that, I think, yeah, this is before the emergency.
Last contract we had with Penachuk was at emergency rate, so it was only sixty.
No, I'm thinking about the graphs, like that rate wasn't on the graphs, it was, it was just a regular rate.
The rate on the graphs were the wholesale numbers.
It's four dollars, what else is something sense?
No, the graph was wholesale numbers. We wouldn't, we wouldn't even have looked at retail numbers for a permanent solution. Uh, that's, that's definitely not, that's cost prohibitive on a retail.
I say that thing as far as Penachuk goes, with the idea that I don't think we're gonna need to use it.
Maybe we won't. Um. Alright, so what do we wanna do with this?
How much supply do we have right now as a max capacity versus demand?
With all wells running and no, no wells down in the middle of the summer? We don't, we wouldn't have enough to meet irrigation.
We're still short a half a million gallon, uh, three hundred thousand gallon G P L. I believe, even that's what we're looking for.
Even with that. Uh, the two and nine.
Right, so wholesale agreement is for a quarter million gallons, two hundred and fifty thousand per day. Which we can use up to a half a million gallons, five hundred thousand a day. So the two hundred and fifty is year round, three sixty five, but we can use twice as much. If we need to, like in the summer. That's the way the wholesale agreement is written.
And it would be there for us, given that we haven't used it since November.
Well, this doesn't start yet. This is, the wholesale agreement is up, is up for the annual meeting on March twenty eighth. And once it gets approved, then it would kick in the next fiscal year. So everything we've gotten from Penachuk so far, that's gone. We're, we're right now back in the retail rate if we want water from.
Exactly, if we use it, we're at four dollars and something.
So we're, and we're selling it for three thirteen, so we're clearly losing money. What Michelle was talking about was the dead lowest rate, the PUC. You know, emergency rate. That's why we're saving money.
She said we're saving a lot of money on the O N M.
We're saving money, we don't need, yeah, so we're not running our wells, we weren't running our wells as much, so we were saving money on chemicals and power.
Right.
So.
But we were purchasing water from Penachuk at that point at sixty, sixty seven cents for a hundred cubic feet.
Right.
And that, and what we're, and it could possibly change, there's gonna be a rate increase, but I think we're looking at ninety, right around ninety seven cents right now. For the wholesale contract.
I'm sure we have to buy the summer.
Well, we have a half summer. We have the half a million gallons a day. I don't remember the total off the, and it was, there was a max amount as well. Uh, in gallons.
Aren't like half our wells down over the summer?
It, this is just, this is gonna. Make us whole on our max day. And this is only, it'll be for the three years. Till we get like, like. It can go, it can go longer, we can extend the contract out, but it's until we get a, you know, Mitchell Woods or AR. In line and that covers us on our max days as well.
But that nice thing too, though, right? Where it's four and five, it's already has the water treatment facility.
Right.
Are tying into that.
Yeah, so right now, we're only running those wells at like, what, six twenty five gallons a minute? The treatment plant's designed for eight hundred and seventy. The vessels that are there can be expanded to a thousand gallons per minute. So based on the max capacity of the vessels, we're only running them. Max capacity is a thousand gallons per minute, we're only running at six twenty five right now. So that's where this artificial recharge would help us realize the capacity of the equipment that's there. And would dilute the groundwater in the aquifer. So that we could possibly extend the life of the carbon vessels. We think, cause the water coming into the carbon vessels should be lower when it's mixed. With the river water.
Typical, I mean typically, what is, uh, if anybody knows, what, what's the reading for the Merrimack River?
They're in the single digits, low single digits, mid-single digits.
So, I mean.
Right.
Trying to go with if EPA goes through, what they like to do, that Merrimack water might be within compliance. Or very close to compliance.
Possibly, but I mean, we're still, we, we'd still be running everything through the treatment plant anyway.
Right, but they're saying that, yeah.
But the point is, you're mixing six parts per trillion with the groundwater that's there now on its own is like seventy. So, you know, even if we added twenty five percent more water to the aquifer. That twenty five percent water would be at six, so that would dilute the seventy. So, you know, there should be savings in that respect, if the carbon runs longer before change outs. Um.
Except you're running more water through it.
Right, so we're planning for more source capacity instead of sitting here and having. Irrigation bans all summer, every summer, if we do nothing to get more capacity online. Because I don't think just Penachuk alone. We, that, we're not looking at that as a long range plan. If you remember, we have a policy. That we wanna have no PFAS detected in the water, right? That's a policy we voted on. I don't know if you were here or not for that, but that's a policy. It's definitely here, it's in the minutes. We voted on it in January. The policy is we're gonna change the media. At the first detect of PFBA or whatever breaks through or at eight months.
Oh, excuse me, I do remember that, because it was, it really wasn't gonna be that much more frequent anyways.
Right, it was in the budget, we went through it in the budget workshop and everything.
And it wasn't that big a part of the budget, it was like.
Right, 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 I remember.
Hundred and forty thousand dollars or something.
Yeah. So, so by bringing Penachuk on with this three-year wholesale agreement. That kind of goes against the policy of having non-detect, because Penachuk has detection of PFOA. Consistently, it's, it's compliant, but it's detectable. So those two things conflict, so that's why Penachuk was supposed to be a temporary solution over the next three years. Until we can get something else implemented on our own, which is either. One or both of artificial recharge and/or Mitchell Woods. Cause I guess Mitchell Woods is um, non-detect on all PFAS as far as I understood.
Yes.
Now, will that continue once we pump it or once the detection limits go lower? I can't confirm that, but. Artificial recharge. Would certainly still be going through carbon vessels at Wells four and five. Right now, so we know that we would still be serving non-detectable PFAS. Definitely PFOA at least.
I think how you were presenting the uh, at the annual meeting about the Penachuk agreement, that you would be. You know, proceeding along with the AR or Mitchell Woods. You know, for, you know, for something in the future, and that's why you were looking at, you know, the shorter term for your. Um, Penachuk agreement.
So I guess if we don't do this, then we're kind of conflicting with everything we've been going along with. Which includes the wholesale agreement. We, so we'd be sending out mixed signals now, if we didn't go forward with this. Is the way I look at it, because. Like I said, the wholesale agreement is really just a three-year bridge, cause artificial recharge isn't gonna be in place, it's gonna take. Three years to get in place. Mitchell would probably not three, maybe two years. So that was the whole point of the wholesale agreement was.
To cover that time.
Yeah, in the interim. And I didn't, I didn't like having the wholesale agreement with Penachuk, cause it does have PFAS in the water. PFOA particularly, but there's nothing else we can do. Except run out of water in the summer, so let's do the wholesale agreement. That, that's kind of where I was coming from. I think that's kind of what the board was thinking. It was just a step to get us to, to be.
And, and that's only if we need it, right? I mean, and we're not just gonna be.
We're gonna be paying for regardless.
Not all of it, some of it we're paying for, I think, what is it, a hundred and eighty four thousand is a flat rate?
Uh, yeah, a hundred, a hundred and eighty one thousand or something.
Yeah, and then the rest of it is based on consumption, right? So that's the way those wholesale agreements work out. There's a flat rate number and then the rest is based on. Uh, demand usage.
Alright, thank you.
Hopefully that helps explain that.
Uh, does, yeah, does.
But um, so again, this is, this is just kind of a first step. On the artificial recharge and then the other one for Mitchell Woods to find out. What we're really looking at. Do we wanna? Make sure we wanna proceed with this, we need, cause right now, I think there was just a price tag put on the project with, without really having a, a full. Um, detailed cost estimate.
And it's gonna be preliminary design too, so we're gonna be, you know, carrying things out, so it's, you know, it's a start of the design too, you know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is this like comparable to like, what, a thirty percent design level or something, would you say?
Yeah.
Alright, and then based on that thirty percent design, that's where you're gonna put some cost numbers to it. So that'll help us refine exactly what we're looking at.
Exactly, yeah.
So I guess all that being said, um. I don't know if there's any other questions or comments that Peter, if you want to offer, did you have anything prepared you wanted to speak to us about or?
No, I thought that that was, yeah, so I was, I thought that that was the plan that you wanted to, you know, to move ahead with this. You know, as, you know, for the, you know, the future and just having that Penachuk being that temporary bridge until you get to this point, you know, so.
Right, right.
That was what I was understanding, what was the, the whole, you know, uh, direction of the board and stuff.
Now, refresh my memory. Is this in the budget for next year? Can't remember what we budgeted for some um engineering.
Actually, yes, it is.
I thought it was, right?
You know, you said this is in there, we, I'm thinking of Jamie's portion. The, what we're gonna be looking at next, probably next month, we, we talked about um. Uh, SDC, the uh. SDC account.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So to find that out of a capital measure instead, okay.
But this is, this is budgeted.
So we, we went over the budget workshop, which was at a month or two ago, a couple of months ago. Those numbers were all in there, this, these two numbers as far as I know.
Yeah, we're in there.
How about we do this, I'll, I'll, I'll move. How about we do this, I'll, I'll, I'll move the. Uh, the E S R number seventy. File number and thirty-seven seven. Uh, Wells four and fire article recharge primary design for seventy-five thousand.
Okay. And that's coming out of the. General budget, we don't have to say it's coming out of an account. I don't think, or is it an account?
You know, I wanna, actually, I need to verify that, cause I think we actually might have pulled it out and set capital reserves to try to get that number down.
Oh, yeah. So can you make the motion that it's either to be funded out of capital reserves or?
Capital reserves, or what was the other?
Or out of budget.
Or out of budget.
Budget line in the. But out of budget or?
Yeah, yeah. Alright. Uh, so that's a motion by Ken. Is there a second? If not, I'll second it myself. So. Any other discussion?
No, I was just surprised, cause you just told me we brought on one point from a million gallons per day that we didn't have before. And, yeah, we're still short.
Well, we had.
One point four being in.
So we lost well three, you realize that, so that's gone.
How much have we used that in the last year?
Every year.
Use well three right now?
Not right now.
Not right now, so. We've, we've been using Penachuck, that was that whole special rate. And. That was that interim. Because we were in violation, we're only gonna turn on wells if we absolutely needed the, the supply. We did not use well three at all last summer.
How did we get to the summer there?
Because we had the Penachuck interconnect.
Okay.
We were, we were, and not at that special low rate. But we can use well two, well two ran most of the summer. Yeah, I mean, it started, the, the man started going back down. In October. And it was, it was, uh, we were satisfied, so it was spot of use through our.
See what I'm saying, though, like, how many million gallons a day do we get from Penachuck over the summer?
We were getting a million gallons a day from Penachuck.
Were?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay, so we're replacing that with well nine, basically.
Yes.
And getting an extra four hundred. But we still need three hundred more? Cause I don't think this one, I don't think this one point four was known at the time we did those charts.
So in the past, we, we've actually looked at what we've. What our capacity is, we've used. Likes, well, uh, twelve hundred and fifty gallons a minute at seven and eight. Historically, we're not getting twelve hundred gallons out of seven and eight. So well nine is, is actually. Really nice coming on, you're replacing. Uh, the wall three capacity, and we're adding to. Kind of back in, so it's kind of a, a, a. We're kind of backing back into the numbers that we used to give out, I guess, the, the. What our system capacity is. Minusing if you might take out seven and eight. Cause we're not getting that full capacity there as well.
Um, so you gotta remember Penachuck. Well, the wholesale agreement with Penachuck is good, again, it's, it's temporary. It's not supposed to be a permanent.
I'm looking at that as just break glass in case of emergency.
Yeah.
I'm thinking about our, our own capacity, like, what is it today?
Uh, I don't know, I can't think of it off the top of my head. That's not, it's not a number, it's, it's like all over the place, because sometimes well seven and eight are putting out. Not enough water, sometimes they are, sometimes it's a well down. You know, so to not account for any of that, that's. Where we'd be in trouble in the middle of the summer, we need five million gallons a day. In the middle of the summer, and I think full permitted everything. Is just about five million gallons a day, but we're not. Umping those, we, we. Like well seven and eight can't achieve that.
Right.
And well three is gone now, so there's, that's, that's coming off. We can't use well three, cause there's no treatment on it. It violates manganese and P F A S. So until we wanna put treatment on that, which we don't wanna, cause it's gonna be like ten million dollars. We're not gonna bother with that, cause it needs iron and manganese treatment, that's why we went to well nine.
I'm aware.
So the well nine's re- really replacing. Well three, and it's also kinda giving at a thousand gallons a minute, we're getting back that. To that, uh, if it was, I don't wanna say it was like five million gallons a day was our. Uh, max. That we could put out, and I think we're getting back to that. With, with that well nine, so we're still, but we're still, I think our max day is five point. Three.
Right.
So that it, we need that additional, we're, we're short that three hundred G P M, that half a million gallons.
So I guess you can look at it as well, nine is replacing well three, there's probably a little more capacity in well nine than there was in well three. Well two is still well two, that's what. That doesn't change. Seven and eight are not quite living up to their full potential.
Well, nine fifty over there, not, not the twelve fifty that, that was.
And we, we've been chasing, according to Keith, all along, we've definitely been chasing a half a million gallons a day. Um, so that's why we said, well, let's get the quarter million gallons a day from Penachuck. But we're really planning on using double that in the summer. Cause you can pump up to double that. In uh, in the agreement. But obviously, we can't exceed. The yearly withdrawal. So if you pump for half the year, if we pump twice as hard on Penachuck, we'll be able to make up that half a million gallons deficit that we're in. So. This is really just. Moving along, so that in the future, after the three years wholesale agreement is up. With Penachuck. We can go and be self-sufficient again and not have to buy Penachuck water. So the numbers all kinda. Work out the same, uh, you know, maybe. If, it's not, I think you're thinking maybe that like, well, nine was a brand new one point four million gallons that we didn't have before. But really, that'd be expensive, that'd be expensive well three.
Yeah.
You know? So that's how you gotta kinda look at that. And, and maybe last summer. Wasn't a, a bad drought like we could have.
And we will have those summers.
Right.
Hopefully, we'll get back to that where we're not running everything. You know?
Right. So. Are we in a position to vote?
Yeah, no, I needed to understand this a little better, I, I couldn't come to the last meeting, so I, I just. Like I said, I'm thinking about it from the perspective that we haven't been running well free. That's what I'm hearing. And we made it through last summer, I didn't realize we're getting a full million from Benachuck. That's a little more than I thought we were using.
Yeah, that was the max that we could draw.
Yeah, we, we're getting the max out of there, it's a million gallons a day, so.
Okay. Alright, I'm ready.
Okay. So with the motion being uh, made by Ken, second by myself, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye. Thanks, that's no oppositions, no abstentions. It carries three zero zero. Um, this next item.
We have to do the other one?
Is, uh, yeah, Mitchell Woods?
Yeah.
I do have one question with Mitchell Woods. When they said to, he fast is where. We're below current uh, detectable levels, uh. So when this primary design's not gonna have like, that desire for a treatment center, correct?
That's correct.
I'm, I'm just, my, my only concern is with. What we're hearing in the news. I mean, what we have currently will it? Be below any potential. Changes uh, in the federal level for the current level. But P fast.
Um. Does it, is, is it? Is it non-detectable P fast? I think I've asked this question before.
Yeah, it is, it's um. If I could share my screen, I could uh, show you uh, the uh. What Emery and Garrett did, is that possible?
Yeah, so while you're doing that, it does say on page two, identify provisions to expand the building and treatment systems in the future. So I guess you guys would be playing, you know, we're not gonna build it now, but we'll.
We'll have like, something in the works.
You'll identify in the site plan, leave room in case we do need to put P fast treatment in.
Okay.
If it becomes.
An issue.
An issue in the future.
Gotcha, that's, that's answering my question.
Alright. I just happened to see that too, so.
You know, I don't know, heard me, but you're all set to share?
Okay. Can you see that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, so this bottom row right here is the uh, testing that Emery and Garrett did uh, right here on August twentieth of two thousand and twenty.
Can you zoom in a little more?
Oh, yeah.
We, we can see it, but not. Oh, there we go.
How was that, is that good?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so that was uh. Right here's uh, August of two thousand and twenty, it was done, and you can see here, it was all, you know, less than the. Detection level for everything. You know, going right through. So.
P F B A detection limit was four point four, it's a little high, isn't it?
That's also the five thirty-seven modified method, that we use a five thirty-three.
We isn't uh.
So is this manganese gonna be, need to be treated, Pete?
Uh, so then uh, up here. There was, so this is in this green area here, this is a testing that was done in two thousand and ten, there was a seven-day pumping test. And uh, the manganese rose from, you know, uh, no, uh, non-detect. Up to around a point oh two, and the secondary limit is point oh five. So there's something there, but.
What's the new limit gonna be, like point oh three? Oh, point, point three is the.
The primary?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then, and then you, uh, point one is, you know, you need to notify. Um. Uh, users and stuff like that, and this is, this is um. This is from D S to uh, fact sheet, uh, two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, so that was just, just out, and you know, in there, it says, you know, infants. Um. You know, they, they're looking at a, a point oh three level here, you know, for infants, twelve months of age and not be given water. Contrations above point three, yeah. So they're saying that, and then, you know, they're, they're also uh, talking about, you know, a notification you at, at point one and stuff like that. So you're, you know, you're. You know, point one and point three, you're, you're, you're definitely below that. You know?
Right. Right, oh two was the highest, right?
Yeah, oh two, yeah, and then stuff, so.
That's probably not much different than like. Wells two and nine either, I don't think. I don't know if you know those off the top of your head, but I'm sure it's.
I do not know those off the top of my head.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, so this is all in um, the report from Emery and Garrett, uh. You know, dated October sixth, two thousand and twenty.
Wow, two years ago, ready, yeah.
Yeah. That's two and a half years ago, yeah.
And then in here, you're talking about a max day demand of five point nine. By twenty forty. System needs to provide an additional half million gallons a day to meet future twenty forty max day demand of five point nine. So I know, I know a lot of, we're, you know. I guess we're not just trying to cover. What we may see now.
Yeah.
I know we've been chasing a half million gallons. According to Keith.
Yeah.
This, uh, I, I think that was even. I don't even know if that brings us to five point nine or not, but. This five point nine number is definitely higher.
Yeah, might, that, that might be a little different now, yeah, cause I think I, I pulled this off of um. We, we put together something back in two thousand and twenty, so that might be something that's, that's like, that five point nine might not be exactly right.
So and we're allowed to get, what? Point three million gallons per day out of this? Is it three hundred thousand?
Yeah, probably.
And that's like seasonally?
Yeah.
So we really only would need this in the summer.
Yeah.
Right?
I think that was the thought, yeah.
It is, but it's a, it's also an emergency source, if we needed it for a day or two. As well, that we could throw on, cause it is in the high service as well.
Yeah. High pressure area.
Yeah.
Alright, so this is um. You're gonna be looking at, um. Oh, did you talk to Jamie about using the existing well? What is there, an eight-inch well out there or something, I don't remember what the?
I believe it's an eight-inch well out there right now, yeah.
Um, so this would, so this would be looking at the cost of it. Like a, a new permanent well out there?
Yes.
Alright. Um. Well, this doesn't, this isn't changing any of your costs, cause this is only like the preliminary evaluation, but I guess in your evaluation. Can we um, talk to Jamie, cause I think he talked about if the existing well is there now. Which is an eight-inch well. I don't know what the. What the screen is. Probably eight-inch screen and inside. Anyways. I don't know if it was he who mentioned it, about the, we may be able to get us, and I thought he had said we could, right? So I guess what I'm saying is, in this evaluation, if we choose to go ahead and approve you to do it, I'd like you to cost out the option of not. Having to do a whole new twelve-by-eighteen gravel pack well.
Yep, I can, I can add that to the, the um. The scope, and then uh, reship that off to uh, to Ron when he goes to sign it, so I can add that in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I don't think, I think it's probably really just getting with Jamie and understanding. If he's confident that we can get three hundred gallons a minute from the existing well there, which I thought he said he was.
Yeah.
So we could forego having to install that. And that would probably save us, I'm guessing. Forty, fifty grand, cause I know, I don't know what a new gravel pack well costs, but. I know it used to be thirty-five grand years, a couple, several years ago.
Save ourselves seventy grand on nine. Because when I hit, yeah.
Yeah, we didn't go to intermediate well, the interim well, and we went right to the final production well, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, yeah, I'd like to, uh, yeah. I'll, I'll add it in there, just to make sure we don't.
Yeah.
Yeah, just so, well, I'd like to add it into the scope, just so, cause I'll be looking at the scope, you know, as we're doing the work, so I'd rather have it in there, just so we don't forget. You know?
Right.
Yeah.
Alright. Um. So let's see, what else you got? Emergency generator located outside, three-phase power. Access road, eight-inch connecting main. Grading and drainage. So you're basically, you'd be doing like a thirty percent design level on this as well?
Exactly, yeah.
Alright.
Yeah.
And that's for. What's this price, twenty-five K, twenty-five K?
Yeah.
I think that's pretty. Pretty reasonable for a thirty percent design, I think. Um.
You would know better than us.
Yeah, I would say it is. Alright, um. Does anybody have any questions on that, or um, anything else for you to offer, Peters?
I just, I just, uh, if you approve it, I just, I do wanna modify that and chip that back off again.
Yeah, so.
If you wanna add that to your. Your motion, yeah.
If anybody is uh, in. Position to make it.
What we're adding to the motion?
Uh, just to add to the scope for. The evaluation to include not. Developing a new. Twelve-by-eighteen gravel pack well, which is the first thing listed over here.
Okay, yeah.
Well, so we're gonna look at the option of both of them, right, just to have it on there?
Right.
Yeah.
So that would be considered optional, cost out that well is.
Yeah.
Optional.
And also, again, the capital reserves. Or the, the budget.
Yes.
So this one you know is coming from capital reserves?
Reserves or budget, I believe we're both in the line item, we both, both about, but I, I.
Okay.
So move uh, E S R number seventy-one. So, uh, E S R number seventy one, file number N twenty eight ninety two. From Mitchell Woods well primarily designed, uh, add to the scope evaluation whether we could, uh, use the current. Uh, well, or the addition of a new twelve by eighteen gravel pack well. Uh, coming from the, either the capital reserves or the budget.
Great, and the amount of twenty five thousand dollars?
Twenty five thousand, okay, yeah.
Second, alright, motion by, um, ten second by John. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye. Great, alright, good. So, we got that covered.
I just made a changes to that, so Jill, I'll send that off to you right after the meeting.
So the price is the same, we don't have to revise the price on that, right?
No, that'll be the same, yeah, yeah.
It'd be cuz we're eliminating something, so, okay.
But we're gonna look at both options, so we're still gonna look at that, yeah, yeah.
Um, alright, so do you have just general updates on Wells two, nine and seven and eight?
Yep, yep, uh, so two, nine, um, the levels have dropped and, uh. Uh, Ron and his crew was comfortable with sending that into the system, so we got a D S approval and, uh.
But that's iron and arsenic, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, arsenic, arsenic came out of it earlier, and then, um. And then the iron was the last one to come out, and you're into the system right now, Ron, correct?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, nice.
So we're, we're into the system, so today we got a, we got a partial substantial completion on the project today. Um, we won't give final, uh, substantial completion until, uh, the well nine work, uh, is done. Um, and then we also have, uh, some skater stuff that has to be done too, so. So that wa, that was good.
What's the timeframe for Wells nine?
Yeah, how's our cables, can we have those cables and things or what?
No, and then no update on that, I asked for an update and they, they, uh. The contractor submitted a, a request, uh, for partial substantial completion as of, uh, March first. And we didn't wanna grant that because we weren't going into the system March first. But in that letter, he, he noted, he said that, um, everything would be online by the end of the month. Assuming that the V F D cables came in by March tenth, which was a week ago Friday, you know, last Friday, so it was about ten days ago. And from, as far as we know, those cables still aren't in yet, so, um. I don't, I don't know, you know.
So at what point, if they never come in? How long, how many months do we let this go on before we see what's the next step liquidated damages?
Uh, yeah, you're, you're technically into liquidated damages right now, they, they were supposed to be done, yeah, they were supposed to be done a long time ago, so, um. So, yeah, I.
If he's not answering you, should we at least start the proceedings for liquidated damages?
So I asked, I asked him that, yeah, I asked him that today because, you know, we went online, you know, we were going online today, you know, so. The last thing he said was in that, that letter, he said hopefully, you know, with the V F D cables coming in March tenth. Um, so that didn't come in, we haven't talked since, so then, um, I sent them an email today saying, okay, we'll give you. Partial substantial completion based on, you know, going into the system today. And I said, you know, on a related matter, what's the update on the cables? So he's on vacation right now, so, uh, you know, let's, you know, I guess, you know, let's see what he, what he has to, to stay there, I can. I can give Ron, you know, obviously Ron, I give Ron updates all the time on that stuff, and he can, you know, send something off to you. And just give you more of an update if you wanna be doing something.
Well, maybe, I, I did talk to Eric who is on site today.
Okay.
And he hadn't heard anything, you know, he's, I haven't heard anything on those.
Is he with the contractor?
Yes.
So how are we up and running if we still need cables?
It's just for nine, well, two is on, but these cables are for well nine. So we can't run well nine.
Oh, I thought you were saying well nine was in the system.
No, well, T.
Two is, yeah.
All two, yeah. Well, two is already wired, so we didn't have to run the wires over there, but, um.
Okay, no, we did have to run the wires.
Fires there?
Yeah, yeah.
They just weren't as big as the wires.
They were the same size wire except, uh, they're five hundred M C M cable going down to well two, but we needed two. You know, sets of five hundred M C M cable going out to well nine. So their excuse was why they didn't order them, they wanted to measure the actual conduit length, so they would order the right amount of cable. Cuz they, you can't splice the stuff, you know, so it's like, oh, you know. I think they, they waited too long to order them, you know, the cables, you know, I just, I, I believe they placed the order. Last June because they submitted a new shop drawn last June, the change. Uh, for one cable manufacturer to the other, and I believe it was to save a few bucks, uh, because I know. So what they did was, you know, give me a little, you know, I think they were rolling the dice because all of a sudden, uh. Electrical costs were going up, cable costs were going up, so they, you know, didn't wanna order it when it was. When they needed it, needed to order it cuz the price were high, and then they were gambling that the price would be coming down. And it wasn't coming down, and then. You know, they, this is all, this is all my speculation that is, you know, and then, you know, they were like, okay, the cables, so they asked us. Hey, the cables are an extra seventy thousand dollars, can we have an extra seventy thousand? And we said, no, you know, you, you know, you had a chance to order the cables before, you know, there's no reason for us to. You know, to pay that, so we denied that, so then they came back with that second. Shop drawn to go to a different manufacturer, that's why I think they did that just to save a few bucks. And that was in June, early June last year, so the, we reviewed the shop drawn within a couple days, so they could have placed an order easily, you know, the first part of June. And, uh, you know, we've been being, you know, and it makes sense that they, you know, we were supposed to be online, you know, sometime last fall. So it makes sense, but I don't know why it's been taking. You know, so right now, we're, you know, we're nine months, if they ordered it early June, you know, we're nine months away from that, you know, so.
So have, has he even produced like any documentation that confirms the order's been placed and when it was placed or anything, nothing?
No, he's, he's, he places cards close to the vest and does not, you know, provide that, yeah.
Would we be within our rights to withhold the substantial completion you're talking about? Since two, you're kind of the same thing?
Yeah, so, uh, so if you're giving them substant, we're giving them partial substantial completion for well two. Uh, final completion is not gonna get until well nine goes, so you're, you're. If you are wanting to do some liquidated damages, it's still continuing because they don't have the final substantial completion.
So I guess that's what I was gonna ask the commission, do you guys feel comfortable for Pete to put a word out to say that if. If we don't, either if we don't have the cables by our March, our April meeting? Then let the contractor know that we're going to proceed with, um, liquidated damages?
Or do you, you know, I can, I can, yeah, I could, I can word something in, in there saying that you're, you're thinking about that, provide us with some information. You gotta give us, you know, some, some information to go from it, so.
I don't need any information, Pete, just tell them get the damn cables in there. I don't need, I don't need them to lie to me, okay?
Right.
Just tell, get the cables in there, or you're not getting substantial completion and you're not getting paid.
Yeah. So I, I, you know, I think, you know, he certainly wants them because once he gets those, he can be looking for his final substantial completion. I think he wants them as soon as he can, but I, I, you know. From what I was, you know, kinda heard, you know, it's like, they're, they're telling, you know. If you push something, you know, from the manufacturer, it's like. They'll just give, tell you what you wanna hear or just give you some kind of information, they're not really giving you accurate information of where things are.
Was that the manufacturer or?
That's what, you know, that Eric, uh, got, you know, so Eric, uh, is it? This, that's the one that Ron said he was just talking with, Eric, um, has his own company called Cuomo Services, and he's a subcontractor to Gene. Doing all of the process work and, you know, helping getting the facility online. So, so he doesn't work directly for, he's not a, a Kinsman employee, but he, you know, he's directly working for Gene as a sub. Um, you know, and, you know, that's what he mentioned, you know, he goes, you, you, a lot of the manufacturers, suppliers. They're not really, you know, giving you any information. So.
Yeah, I don't know if we almost want him to tell him to, we wanna talk to him ourselves. And they, at the April meeting. I know. Or, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna initiate liquidated damages cuz we gotta have those wells up and running by May. You know? I mean, if the wholesale agreement fails in, in the annual meeting, we're gonna need all of our wells online.
Yep.
Or we're in serious trouble. We, it's like five thousand dollars a day to buy water from Penachak on the retail rate if the wholesale agreement fails. So, uh, that's, that's what, that's the bill he's gonna get, just let him know.
Pete, would another supplier be helpful?
At this.
I know a guy that works at Electrosola right up in Bosque.
Yeah.
Huge wiring cable company.
Yeah, so this, so the V F D cables are a special cable, you know, and they, you know, they, they, it's not just.
Something too?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's all, everything's all, you know, combined up together, you know, into one big cable, so you got your three. You know, five hundred M C M cables in there with your ground, I forget what size the ground is. It's all wrapped up in that, you know, that same, you know, one cable that they pull through, so.
I mean, it's a multinational company, so.
Yeah.
Did you that sort of thing or not? But if you wanna look into it, I can get you some names and numbers.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm, you know, if, if he can't get them for nine months, I, I, you know, switching, you know. I don't know if any other company would say, oh, yeah, we have that sitting right here, you know, so. I don't know, I guess it's worth it, I guess it's worth a call, I, if you wanna give me that information, I certainly make that call.
Yeah, if you have the spec on the cable, you can send them or something.
So the company's called Electrosola.
Elect, Electrosolar?
Lot A, just sends an A, no.
Spell it?
I think it's E L E A T R O S O L A. They're right in Bosque. And I think, I think he's the general manager, his name is Lionel. I don't remember his last name, but give me a couple of days cuz I gotta talk to my buddy to get him to talk to Lionel. See if they'll do a favor, cuz it's a pretty close relationship there.
Okay. If you wanna do that, yeah, then, and drop me an email, and I certainly will contact them.
That's good, appreciate that, John.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I just don't know, I, I don't really trust that he's been waiting for nine months, I, I, I don't know that the order wasn't placed on December or January. You know, he might, he, like you're saying, he might have been writing out the cost and see if it drops and.
Yeah, and, and he could have been, the only thing is, you know, we were looking at being online and, you know. If, if we go back to June, we are shooting to go online September, October, you know, that's what he was initially thinking, you know, before. You know, some of these delays and stuff, so I doubt they would have been. You know, holding off, yeah, so, like, if I had to go back to, uh, you know, to June, I would say, yeah, they, that was placed in June, it's. I would, I would feel comfortable, you know, with that, but I don't, I don't have any proof, but it makes sense.
Yeah, I don't know why we, why we, we wouldn't wanna start liquidated damages now, I mean. It's, it's, he's still gonna set up to finish the project, he's not gonna walk away, right?
Nope.
And if we did liquidated damages, is it retroactive or is it start from the day that we say go? And liquidate?
Technically, it's from the last day, you know, contract time, you know, per change order to when they. Till when they get every, you know, when he gets his final substantial completion.
So that's basically today?
Uh, no, no, because he doesn't, yeah, because that, this is just partial substantial completion, so that he's, you know. You know, liquidated damages would not end until he gets final substantial completion is when that V F D cable comes in and you got well nine up and running.
Right?
Yeah.
When was it due to be done?
Contractually, it was October, so.
Wow.
I believe it was mid-October, I think it was October fifteenth was the, was the. I had to go back and look, but I believe that's what it was contractually, yeah.
There were other things, there were valves, there were, um. V F Ds or other things that were holding up, you know, they had to, we had to extend that. We didn't have to, but we allowed them.
No, it was actually all the valves ended up coming in. Um, in time for when we needed them, so what we, because he did not have his, um. You know, the valves and, you know, the V F D cable and the generator, we, we said, okay, we don't want you to take well two down. You know, we were planning on taking that down, something like August twenty seventh, twenty eighth last summer. And we're like going, well, if you don't have all your stuff, there's no, once you take it offline. There's no putting it back online temporarily because it's gone, you know, cuz you gotta pull out all that stuff, you gotta pull your pump and all that kind of stuff. So we said, okay, no, we don't want you to do that until, you know. You know, some of the equipment, you know, that you're waiting for comes in, and then we got word in, um. You know, um, it was, I think, early November, all of a sudden, you know, he said, oh, the, you know, the V F D's coming. You know, the generators coming, you know, we, they had the, you know, the valves already at that point. So we're like going, okay, you know, if all that stuff's coming, you know, we'll take your word for it, you know, start doing the work on well two. And then they were done with all that, the stuff at well two. By, I think, the first week of December, so that didn't hold anything up because, you know, everything else, you know, getting the, the vessels there, getting the carbon there and all that kind of stuff. That all got delayed and it had nothing to do with the work at the well two building, so. We did, we did delay some of their work on that well too, but it didn't affect their. Um. You know, um, their completion, so.
Yeah.
They would still be, if they did that work au, on August, you know, twenty eighth, if they started right then, we'd still be in the exact same position right now. Because what we've been currently waiting for, for this partial substantial completion is get the carbon in the vessels, get it started up and get it running, you know? Now, you know, that just happened today and added nothing to do with the V F D cables that we still don't have, so.
Yeah.
He would probably, you know, he would, you know, if you're gonna be looking at it liquidated damages, I assume he's gonna be coming back at you for that, you know. For, you know, trying to make an argument for that to, you know, to, you know, sort of get some of his cost back, I guess.
So it doesn't go back all the way to Oc- October, it's, well, one way or the other, even if it starts on that day one now, in April. There's, he needs some kind of, right now, without even answering you or showing any evidence of when he put the order in or something. Um, we kinda need him to, uh. To get, give us an update, really what's going on. Or put, get the cables, one way or the other. I mean, this, we have to be on, like I said, in May, so. Just let him know that, that, you know.
I lost you for a bit, you froze.
Yeah, you were freezing up too, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I think if it needs to be on for May, and it's been six months since.
I don't know if he can hear me cuz he's frozen out, I don't know what's going on. It's gone. I don't know, alright, well.
Uh, I'm back, I just didn't know if it was, uh, my cable or my internet connection or not.
So do we wanna go forward with this? I mean, if you, if we gotta be on in a month and a half. And it's been six months since the contractual completion date. I don't think we need to wait anymore, and we're done.
So what do we wanna do? Tell him we're gonna proceed with liquidated damages? I mean, what's the difference if we wait, if we wait another month or if we start it now? It's still the same starting date, whatever that.
Yeah, the October day, yeah.
I mean, even if it's today, alright, so today, everything else is done, the only thing left out there are the cables. So even if we started today, and we said today's partial substantial completion. If we just went back to today going forward.
Yeah, no, I wouldn't do that, I would, I'd, I'd go back, you know, you wanna take your strongest bargaining point is right from. From October fifteenth, if, if that's the date, yeah.
So if we told him we're, we're initiating liquidated damages as of October, from dated back to October. What do you think his reaction would be?
Yeah, I could talk to him and just, you know, just say, you know, you know, we need an update, the commissioners are considering liquidated damages. You need to give us an update and, and get us that stuff, you know, before the end of the week and just see what we get on that, and I can, we can send some stuff out, then. Then, you know, once you hear that, then you guys can make a decision if you wanna proceed with that.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Peter, James, is James gonna be at the, uh, walkthrough tomorrow?
I don't know if he is or not. Is he gonna be back from vacation then?
That's, yeah, that's kinda what I was asking, I don't know if he is or not either.
Yeah. Yeah.
It just, it just goes back to what I'm saying, you know, next month, April, the cables aren't in, May, the cables aren't in, June, July, August, I mean, how long do we wait?
Yeah.
This, well, nine never go into service? Ever? I mean, at what point is enough enough?
Yep.
That's, that's what I wanna communicate to him.
Okay.
And without providing us any evidence of when they were ordered. Anything from his supplier that says what the problem is. Just telling you, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know. You know, at what point does I don't know? Is it still, I don't know, in August? I mean, what point does it say?
Yeah.
All right, I think we can have that.
Okay.
Of course. Um. So we go Wells two and nine, you wanna move on to seven and eight?
Yeah, seven, eight, just a, a quick thing, we, um. And Ron, were you gonna be bringing this up in your commissioner's report about the Calgon?
Uh, yeah, we can, we can talk about it now, that's fine.
Yep, so we met with Calgon, um, about, uh, doing a carbon change and stuff. Um, they suggested a total replacement of the carbon, which is. Somewhat not surprising, you know, that they wanted to do that, but as we got talking about it, um. The carbon form from, uh, Calgon. Has a, a higher density than the carbon from. Evoqua, so when you're doing your backwash and you have to fluoridize your bed. You know, the lighter Evoqua carbon's gonna, you know, you need to hire, you need a higher flow rate. For your. Uh, Calgon carbon because of the higher density, for the higher flow rate, it's gonna be pushing up, but with your lighter media that, of the Evoqua. Then that can certainly get pushed up and pushed out of your vessel, you know. And the more that you have for. Change out, so if we. What we saw on four or five, we, when we brought the carbon. You know, to get regenerated, they had to put about fifteen percent makeup carbon in there to get the volume that we wanted. So if that percentage stays true, you know, the first time we regenerate the carbon at seven and eight, if, if that's where we're gonna be doing it. Then you're gonna have fifteen percent makeup carbon. You know, in there, uh, for. Um, count from Calgon, and then if you do it a second time, all of a sudden now you get thirty percent, and the more you have in there, you're trying to backwash it, you might be losing some of. Your Evoqua carbon out of the top. So that was, that was one thing that kinda, kinda came up. Um. We're trying to summarize some of the data now, uh, we did get, um. Some piece of information that we really need to investigate. But, uh, they mentioned something about. Um. The Evoqua carbon is. Is more of a byproduct of, uh, manufacturing titanium. That they realized was a product that they could be selling. Compared to a straight mined product. Okay? I'm not sure if that's true, and we need to do some more investigations on it, that's, that's a claim that, you know, one manufacturer made. Okay?
So it's really not, it's, it's not being mined for water treatment, it's a byproduct of the titanium industry or something, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
And wasn't the iron added in as well, P?
Yeah, then his iron added into the titanium process.
Oh, my God, are you kidding me?
Well, that's what he was saying, so I'm like, we have to do some investigations on this, cuz I don't, I don't wanna say that that's the case, you know, we're hearing it from somebody, so. We are, you know, looking into that with Evoqua.
That's good, because of. I don't know if, if you put words in your mouth or if you were using Evoqua's words, but. I was told that the iron was a naturally occurring. Uh, phenomenon where the carbon material was mined in Australia.
Yeah, well, that's where the titanium manufacturing is, is in Australia, so. So, uh, yeah, so, uh, we need to look, I, I don't wanna start accusing any firm, so I don't wanna, I just. That's just some preliminary thing that we gotta start looking into and see if that is true. That was, yeah, because. I was certainly under the impression by everything that Evoqua was saying, that this was a mined product and you don't know what. You know, vein you're gonna get into, and if you get into a vein, it's a little more irony than another one. You might have a problem with, you know, iron, and I think that was one of their reasons. For. You know, the higher. Iron, you know, and if it, if it is this, then I, I'd, I'd be kind of. I'd, I'd be very disappointed in the vocal for kind of, you know, sort of misleading us of, of where we were, so.
That, that's to say the least.
Yeah. So, um, I don't wanna, uh, that's just. Something we heard and we need to investigate, so I, so I, you know. I'm not going on record saying that that's true right now, but.
All right.
They are aware, uh. Calgon is aware that we, we're looking at doing a lot of change out over there, they're gonna get us a price on new media. As well. And it's kinda up in the air right now as far as the. Uh, regening it. As, as well, the makeup media.
So Wells, the word, this. We're not gonna be, this is. This is exactly where we didn't wanna be. Thought, I thought all this could have been done, like. By the end of May.
And that's what we asked, we, we said, you know, if you, you know, if we're gonna be doing this, we wanna be doing it quickly, so. They were supposed to get us a price by when we're on.
You know, I, I don't recall off the top of my head, I thought we would have it by now, I'm actually meeting with the sales rep tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, okay, yeah.
Walk through over to seven and eight, so.
Okay, yeah.
All right. Cuz then we're still talking about caustic treatments on. The lag vessel or something?
Yep. So that can all happen now, so we're gonna be doing maintenance. Seven and eight. Now that we have well two on, going into the system. We're gonna do, uh. Regening of the, the, uh, uh. Art of manganese filters, green sand filters, and then we're gonna work on. Doing the. The re, the, the regen of. The lead vessel. Or replacement, or replacement, but we can do the, uh. Need to wait on that to see the, the, uh, uh, treatment of the, the lag or the lead, yeah.
Yeah.
Decide what, which direction we're going, so that, you know.
Does Calgon regenerate their media and for future considerations?
Yeah, they do, yeah, then we, we were asking them also for what their policy was for, uh. Um. For certification of that too.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the, uh, the other thing that they, um. The Calgon. You know, when we were doing some of the testing, um, they had higher arsenic levels, you know, and that was one of the reasons why. Um, we chose to go with, you know, Evoqua, because we had lower iron level, I mean arsenic levels. Because seven, eight, we don't have any discharge, you know, it just discharge into the ground, we don't have a sewer to go to. Um, so they have, um. Their, their carbon, I forget what, what number it is, it's like CS four hundred, you know, you know. AR, which is acid wash, and they add the CS four hundred plus, which is a double acid washed one. Um, he was mentioning that the, um. That the arsenic levels don't drop as much as they thought it would with the, right, with the AR. You know, compared to the plus, you know, the double acid wash, once you go to the double acid wash. The arsenic really comes off of it, but it doesn't come off. As much as they thought in the, with one acid wash, so they're gonna want a double acid wash type, you know, and media and stuff. Which would get your arsenic level down closer to what you, um, are seeing with the, um. The Evoqua stuff. Then you're gonna be, you know, the media is gonna be a lot more expensive, so.
Right.
We'll find that out when we get the quote. Coming in from them, but that's, that's the, you know, one bad thing about the Calgon is the arsenic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that could get real expensive if we can't put it in the ground, we have to truck it away and bring it to the.
Well, we could frac tank it and delete it, then it, and put it out.
Oh.
Release it after that.
Oh, so you have to put some backwash in the tank and some clean water in the tank and then dump it.
Get to a, a good level, and then we can start, yeah, pump it out.
Which is strange, cuz it's the same mass of arsenic going.
Right, it is exactly, it's exactly. Well, that was the same thing at two, you know, DES was saying. Well, you can pump, you know, every other day, you know, and discharge the arsenic out there, but, you know, only go forty, you know, forty thousand gallons a day. But it's like, well, if we're gonna be pumping, you know, you know, X number of gallons out there, it's gonna be a certain load of arsenic going out there, no matter if we're doing it.
Right.
Within a week or we do it within a month, you know.
Yep.
But yeah, I, I agree with that too, and then there's, you know, if you do have that going out to your basins, if you do happen to pump it out to your. Um. Existing iron and manganese basins, there is some, you know. And I, I think it would be hard to calculate, but, you know, you have iron out there where arsenic does get, you know, attached to iron. So you, you know, you do get some, somewhat of. You know, treatment going through your.
Oh, I see.
But, you know, if you, if you think about your iron and manganese beds and you got that big sludge layer on the bottom. You know, I'm not sure how much is going down through all that sludge or how much is going out through your sidewall, you know, right, yeah. So it's not like it's a huge, a huge, you know. You know, iron thing that, you know, going up all the sidewalls and all that kinda stuff, so you get some treatment of it, but I don't know how much, and that's where it'd be very tough to calculate that.
All right, so. So the reason we're not going for the regen, regeneration of the Evoqua. Is why? Because we think. It might, the iron's still in there, it might be a problem?
I think the iron is, you know, I think the, I, my guess is the iron's probably out of that, and you're not gonna have any problems with that, you know.
So it's the biofilm, is there an issue or concern about the biofilm in there that?
We still don't know where that's coming from, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, right, you know, and, and, you know, then that's the thing, is if you, if you. If we go ahead and we do the change out and you don't, didn't really fix that, now you're sort of. You know, you're kinda coming back to, you know, you're putting, you know. You, you get more biofilm in that, I don't know. I don't, we don't know where that's coming from, you know.
Yeah.
We were at, uh. Calgon, I, I know there was some. Uh, some. Maybe switching over to media at this point, so. That's why we're, we did explore that end of it. I mean, they are working, gotta give us, we're gonna pull a sample that, uh. Uh, off the lead, um. Once, once we can de-water it, we're gonna go right through the fifty percent port. We can send it off to them, they can give us. Give us some more information or get, you know. Give us something analyzed, um. Calgon. Okay, we'll do some, some work there, so it was, uh. But that was what was driving it, was the possible changing over right now. What we're looking at, unless we do the whole change out. Or a partial, or. If we're only gonna do the regen, probably will stay with Evoqua at this point.
And just the makeup too, you mean, yeah, makeup, sounds like the two are incompatible with each other, right? Is that what you're saying?
It, it, it sounds like they're, they would probably be, you know, we haven't totally analyzed that yet, but it sounds like the, the density issue there. Um. They're also looking into that, into that, to see if that's a real, uh, Calgon, that is, is looking into that to see if that's a real option for them. They certainly had some hesitations to do that, and that, and that's one of the reasons why they're recommending, um. You know, going with, you know, all of their carbon, you know, just doing, you know, a, a total change out of it.
Yeah, I think that's gonna be a lot more expensive than just regenerating. I don't know if I wanna wait around for, uh.
Yeah.
I don't know.
And then if you did that, then, then you, we gotta be thinking about, okay, so where is that gonna be disposed of? Where is your original carbon gonna be disposed of?
Right.
But you don't have a legacy issue that you're dealing with in the future.
Yeah. All right, I, whatever, I just wanna make sure we move along.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, there's a, it's a, a real lot of questions out there, and I know we're running out of time be, before, like. We wanna make sure this facility is online this summer and all that kinda stuff, but it.
I, I almost think we should just proceed with Evoqua regenerating. The media and then do the caustic treatment while the media is out. We could shut well seven and eight down, do the caustic treatment on the lag vessel. And then, uh. It maybe if, if, maybe for the next change out, we consider Calgon, you know, if we can't, if they're gonna just keep waiting to give us answers. The longer we wait for Calgon. The, the longer we're waiting to schedule. The regeneration of the Evoqua media, if that's the way we're going to, so I don't.
Yeah, they were saying that, um. Um, you know, so, once we could get a sample out of that, they said it would take a week, uh, two weeks to get the test results. So, um. If, if now that, now that well two is online, now the district has, you know, more confidence in, in shutting down. Um, seven and eight, you know, so then, then you need to drain the vessel. You know, so you don't have any water in that, and then, you know, then you can pull out, he said it's simple, you can just open up that port. And without any water in there, you know, the, the carbon's gonna sit there, then you can take a PVC pipe and just stuff it into hole and sort of. Extract a sample into the PVC pipe, he said it's pretty easy to do that, so.
Through what port, like one of those sample ports?
Yeah, if you look on the, on the vessel, there's a.
Oh, yeah, it's like a flare.
And it's, and it's four bolts, and if you pull all those four bolts off, then there's gonna be a hole right there. And you, so that, that would come out and you have a screen going in there, and then you can actually stick a.
Sampler in there, yeah.
Yep.
Well, I would have more confidence if we had well nine on it too, before, you know, so.
Yes, exactly.
But I don't, I don't wanna be at the end of May and have. No, the same carbon at well seven and eight, no well nine on. That, that's gonna be a big problem. All right.
Yeah, so if we, if we, if we're gonna be moving ahead with Evoqua type of thing, then we would probably need to start scheduling that up. You know, for them to get out there and grab the stuff.
Um, I mean, what do you guys think? Do you think we should, at this point? I'm kinda worried if we don't have well nine up and running, and they're not gonna have.
These are operations. I know, I, I can speak to Calgon versus Evoqua, I know you can, but I can't.
I'm not really sure either, I just, I can speak to having well seven and eight dying down in the middle of the summer. That's not cool, at all.
I don't think we're gonna have. We've already, I guess, there is a possibility you could get some iron again. From the, you know, when you do the regen. But we've already been through it, so I, I, if we do, I think it'd be minimal.
I agree with that.
And if we. Do the, uh, the acid wash like we did in four or five, possibly could get a little bit, but it's only a fifty, you know.
For the makeup, yeah.
Same theory was only fifteen percent. You know, and I think they, I think they estimate highest, as high as twenty. So I think it'll be, it should be minimal if we do get any iron.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it would be wise to do that acid washed again, if we're gonna go Evoqua.
I was more wondering if the biofilm is gonna still be a problem after they regenerate it. If it's still, or is that gonna burn off any biofilm, that's what I'm wondering. I'm wondering if the biofilm is the reason we should replace all the media.
I think that that would, I think that that, you know, if you're gonna be incinerating that, the biofilm should go on.
Think that would burn off, yeah. So I don't know, I'm, I would recommend, let's proceed with just doing Evoqua now and. We'll talk to Calgon for the next change out, which is probably gonna be eight months later, which is not, it's gonna come faster than we think.
Right, that was the initial, mine is God, and it was, again, it was. We looked at Calgon, cuz we thought about. Possibly changing that media.
I would say start the process with Evoqua to change out, to, you know, regenerate the media, but when, and still get that cost from Calgon.
Oh, absolutely.
And if it's like a real reasonable cost, then maybe we put the brakes on Evoqua, but. I don't know, when do we pay Evoqua, is that, when, when do we sign something like a commitment?
We could, when we ask for the change out, we'll sign that commitment. I'll sign that contract, then that's when they.
So they're, they're still gonna take like a week or two or whatever to give us a contract for it, probably. So they're still gonna take like a week or two or whatever to give us a contract for it, probably.
They usually, they were pretty quick on the last one.
Alright, so you just have, you can hold off on signing that until we know what the cost for Calgon is.
Absolutely, yeah.
Alright, so maybe we do at least that, but.
I mean, there. Yeah, I think the uh, there was some testing. Maybe to test that media for, you know, what's in there for metals. That got pulled right off, I mean, we'll pull that right off, send that out. But that doesn't hold anything up, because they'll basically, they'll set a truck out as well to. We get ahead of it a little bit, I guess, as far as the. Change out goes, it's kind of all happening at the same time. But I, yes, I can definitely hold off. Signing until we get some sort of a. Alright. And like I said, I'm gonna be talking tomorrow, but we need this. Alright, we need it soon.
Okay. Alright, any other good news?
No, I yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't need to dump, you know, and I I, you know, I. I wanna tell you, but I don't wanna tell you because I'm like, I don't know if I'm sure, you know, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I just thought I I'm like, I want to my, I, you have some information, I gotta at least say, you know, say we gotta look into something, and if something's there, but it's. I don't, you know, I don't wanna falsely scare you, but I also don't wanna hide any information from you either.
No, I appreciate that.
Yeah, so.
It's just the timing.
I think we were all surprised when when they were stuck, when they were starting to talk about that it was, you know, part of the waste products and another manufacturing. It's, that was, was a big, big surprise.
Right, yeah. I mean, I think even if that was the issue, the iron's gone now, so I think we we're we're stuck with this Evoqua stuff for the foreseeable future, so.
Yeah.
Maybe we wanna change it out down the road, but I don't know.
And if and if that is, and and we gotta go, okay, so now, so so now we kind of know the devil, you know, type of thing, so it's like, okay, so now let's. Let's go with the acid washed, because it's, you know, when we're doing our change out, we need to do makeup and. Does that work? And maybe that works for us, you know, and that's what we move ahead with. But, you know, it just, it just, you know, kind of getting some of this stuff. You know, um, at this time, I don't, you know, and if the, if that is the, you know, if that does. You know, you know, become actual truth, I'd be, you know, it just, it's just disappointing that we're. We're, you know, kind of hearing that from somebody else and they're not sharing that, you know.
Oh, absolutely, that's that's a whole nother issue that we have time to put something together on that, if that's the truth.
Yeah.
Alright, just keep in mind all this, because all this we're gonna have to go through again next month when Will's back, because he's gonna ask all the same questions.
Okay.
And then someone else might not be here, and then we sit that back.
Okay.
Alright. So was that, is that everything you had? Are you gonna hang out?
Yeah, I didn't know, did you need me? It's I'm I'm just looking through your list there and I, the only thing I can see is the media change out policy. Is that anything you, you know, I can certainly sit here, I can certainly leave it on until we get to it if you want, you know, but.
I was thinking, you wanna do that next then, since Pete's here?
Yeah, let's knock this out. Yeah, that's.
Okay, so I think you just had a new policy today on this, right? That came out. Right, here.
I don't really feel like this is written right. With the, our intent, because it says. Or. So. That means if eight months go by. And we're not seeing any breakthrough. We're obligated to change out the media for no reason.
Right.
I would replace that with, but no sooner than eight months.
The way originally was is said whichever occurs last. And that got dropped.
And that's the same issue as or. Whichever occurs later.
Was it say that at the end?
Yeah. Yeah, but we don't. If eight months go by and there's no breakthrough, the way this is written, we're obligated to change it out. So it's, it's just.
No, it says. Reactivate or replace GAC after two consecutive samples of PFBA breaking through into the effluent, the lead vessel. Or after eight months of operation, whichever occurs later. So if your PFBA breakthrough occurs after eight months. That's. After eight months. Right?
It says to reactivate or replace the granulated activated carbon. And the first thing says after two consecutive breakthroughs. And the or says after eight months of operation.
Whichever occurs later.
Yeah, so you could read it. It, I mean, write it out for things, so. Reactivate or replace GAC after two consecutive. Or reactivate or replace GAC after eight months. And I think all you gotta do is change that or tip, but no sooner than. Literally.
Yeah. But no sooner than eight months. Into the lead vessel.
No sooner than after eight months of operation, whichever occurs later. Actually, it doesn't have to have to say that, does it?
Why wouldn't it be this, I think the way reactivate or replace after two consecutive samples of PFBA breakthrough through the. Uh, the lead vessel, why do we have? Why wouldn't we need to have have to leave that? So why do we? After eight months of operation, whatever occurs later, because once you have failed twice. You're, you're gonna need to change it.
Failing twice is the or. Either I, either you're replacing it after it fails twice. Or after eight months, whichever's later. It doesn't say both.
So in other words, they can fail it twice in fifth and sixth month, but we're not gonna change it to the eighth month?
Well, the eight nights was, I think, when it seemed like it was.
This says you either change it at the first breakthrough of the PFBA.
No, two consecutive samples.
Or at, okay, two samples, or at, after eight months, whichever occurs later. So if PF, if eight months go by and there's no breakthrough. Then that hasn't occurred yet. So if in nine months it breaks through, and then at ten months it breaks through, we measure it for the second time. Then you have two breakthroughs of PFBA that occurred after eight months, so then you change it. I'm not, the way it's written sounds like it's fine.
So maybe I. I thought the intent was either. Change it on the, change it on breakthrough or at eight months, so that we would, it was gonna be. Before. Both of them, or busy, the busy season. Uh, it seemed like that's when it was break. Kind of when it was breaking through anyways.
Yeah.
But we wanted to catch it. Unless I misunderstood, we wanted to catch it sooner, if you have a breakthrough sooner, we wanna go. Change it out when it breaks through or for, no, but no longer than eight months, because we wanna.
No, I I definitely, if if we went ten months with no breakthrough of any PFAS. I would not wanna change it out at eight months.
Okay, I misunderstood though.
We can always. You're right, we have to be prudent when we plan on change outs. Because we don't wanna be shutting down wells for. An extended period of time in the middle of the summer.
Technically, we wouldn't, because we can run off the one vessel.
That's true. So.
Ideally, I wouldn't wanna be doing a change out.
Yeah, so, so you're, what you're just saying, if after twelve, twelve months, there's no breakthrough, it's no point in changing.
Yeah, I don't want to change.
So it's, oh, really, all we need to have after two consecutive failures. That's when we go into changing.
Right, but if we have two, we'll, we'll put it this way. As soon as we put the la- lag vessel at well seven and eight, we're gonna have breakthrough PFBA, because it's already broken through. So it's gonna be month one, we're gonna have PFBA breakthrough, so that means we're gonna have to change the lag vessel? No. I wanna make sure we wait, I don't wanna change it vessels less than eight months, even if you have breakthrough. So. I think it needs to be written or on this. That I make, does that make sense?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Two months.
So the the goal, it's not necessarily, when do we have two breakthroughs? So when we get to eight months, if there's two breakthroughs after eight months, then we're gonna change it. Either way, we're not changing it before eight months.
Yeah, or if we have breakthrough in months two and three, then we can be ready to change it in month eight.
Right, that's the way I'm. So, yeah, so.
So we gotta live with breakthrough for eight months, if we have it right away.
Right.
You know what I mean? The reason I'm doing that is because that's what we put in the budget, and I don't wanna totally add. All these extra costs, it's kind of like a. Uh, like a compromise between being prudent and changing out the media as soon as we have to. But not sooner than we budgeted for.
I'm just trying to point out, it's like, well, I'm reading this, oh, well, you failed twice, you need to get me changed. I say, I I'm just saying, there might be some confusion when somebody reads it, they where.
Apparently there is, because John's reading it the same way you are, so maybe you wanna add the words that he put in. I don't know, to me, it's one or the other, it's it's whichever occurs later, PFAS breakthrough or eight months. That's the way I read it, whichever occurs later.
It is the way it reads, and that means after eight months, that's the later. If nothing's broke through, you're changing it out, but you just said you don't wanna do that.
Well, PFAS hasn't broken through, so that's number, that's one thing is PFAS breaking through.
You want that to be a definite.
The second thing.
Or it's not a definite. It's either a breakthrough or it's been eight months. And I, and that's the way I understood.
Whichever occurs later. So if eight months goes by.
The other.
And the PFAS hasn't broken through, then you don't change it.
Well, you wouldn't wanna, but the way it's written, you'd have to.
I disagree with that.
I can agree to disagree, run it by Kerry, I don't care.
Run it by Kerry.
But I'm telling you, the way that. The way that is written. You could, or it gives you two choices, right? And why would it be so bad to just change that to but no sooner than? It's very clear. You're gonna change it through after two breakthroughs. But you're not gonna change it any sooner than after eight months of operations.
Alright.
That is the correct way to do that.
Or. Has to have eight months operation with, without, after eight months, two consecutive failures.
Yeah, I mean, that would just be reworking the sentence to put eight months first, and that would work too.
I I think, I think the wording is correct, but I think John, how you're saying it makes it more clear, I think.
Yeah, yeah, I guess you're right. Alright. So make that change. I can live with that. I think we're all in agreement that what we're talking about, though, is if no PFAS is broken through in eight months. We shouldn't change it, correct?
And if PFAS breaks through after three months, we're not gonna change it.
Yeah, yeah.
That's exactly why.
Yeah, alright, the principle, that's the most.
Yeah, the principle, we're, well, I agree, it's just. But it's where if somebody outside of here reads it and say, well, what come you didn't do this?
That's why we're doing this policy, right, is to, is to cover. Ourselves for what we're doing.
Yeah.
Fine with the two consecutive breakthroughs, I, because I added that and it was upon breakthrough both in the.
Yeah, so the only thing with that is if you get, if you get breakthrough in month eight. First time.
We can do it. You can repeat sample. So the reason I.
Okay, yeah, I guess.
Because if you get a bad, if in fact, then, then you you've already started the process, you then.
Yeah. Think. But you did it next, but put it this way, say if it, that the eighth month is July and you have the first breakthrough. Then it goes to the month, uh, August, then you have the breakthrough, then you at least, you can try to set it up for September, you're out of the.
Well, that was the other comment I had had on here, is once you get the second breakthrough. Then you start planning. And how long does it take? It's taken us, what, three, four months before actually the media's changed out? So.
Well, it was December.
September eighth is what.
They picked up.
January twenty sixth, that's what they did. They brought it back.
Yeah.
And there were delays there.
It wasn't the three week turnaround like they said, but it was still a, it wasn't, it wasn't months, but.
So that's.
More than the cables.
Yeah, it's been doing better than the cables, definitely.
Should we word it so that at the second, that the second breakthrough into the effluent? That. Change out should begin, the the change out process should be initiated? I don't want someone to come back and say, you had breakthrough at month seven and you you actually didn't put the vessel, you didn't change the media out until month nine, because it's. Could take two months to turn this around.
Well.
It doesn't really matter, we're way above the regulation with this anyways. I know, but it's sort of like this, like an enforceable policy that someone can.
Where they pick up, so if they, if it's takes two weeks, let's say, it was fairly quick, I don't. I mean, I can go back, I'll tomorrow, I'll take a look at when I started my emails with, with Evoqua and actually get scheduled the change out. With how long that that gap was. It doesn't seem like it was that long, it seemed like it was fairly quick.
I thought I remembered at least three months going by, but like three meetings where, how's the, yeah, we haven't done it yet, oh, we haven't done it yet, oh, we haven't done it yet.
And it, it may be.
So that's the way it's gonna be.
Then could you add something just to?
Yeah.
Like, that's the sense. It, uh, well, after the eighth month or two failed sa- uh, samples after eight months. If soon is possible, um, based on the demands of the water supply, we pursue the change out.
Yeah, so I'm trying to think if, if we wanna put something in there about the timing of this, you know. Because if it's gonna, if if you do, if you follow this and we have to do a change out July. That might be a concern. Although, like you're saying, you're still running one vessel.
Right, so I would leave that one vessel on.
Yeah.
And continue, let that continue. Grabbing PFAS.
Right.
And then the minute they pick it up, that's when you would switch to your lag. Now you're, I mean, you're still covered, there is only, the only thing is, when we do the, like a bacteria sample, that there's like one day it might be shut.
Right.
You're in trouble in service, but other than that, it's still, it's gonna remain in service.
So. You could actually take all the media out in one day?
Oh, yeah.
We have to let it drain or something first, or no, you wanna keep it wet.
It was like a half, yeah, it was like a half hour, a half, half a day at most, and it was on its way.
They slurried out, it's slurried out, so you want the water in there.
So how much downtime would there be in the middle of the summer if we really had to do this? I know you can switch right over to vessel two, the lag vessel. Um, so, we, like, how much real downtime are we talking about here?
Well, I think it's just, uh, they, to get it, so you got, you lose a day to pull your, correct me if I'm wrong, Ron, but you're gonna, you lose a day taking the carbon out. Or part of a day, you know, because you gotta be, you know, sort of shutting that off. And then once, once, you know, that's out, you can go back online with your lag vessel. And then you're gonna be offline when you come back with your carbon, then you gotta take a bacteria test and stuff like that, right? So you're gonna be off another two days there, correct, Ron? Is that what happened down?
Some flushing or something, right?
Yeah.
Not, not slurring it at, at, um. You know, five hundred gallons, you know, six hundred gallons, but I thought we were slurry, it wasn't around. Three, I, I can, those are the things I need to check on. I I go through the process and see what what we had to flow through it, but I I don't believe. If we were down, it was a half a day, we were switched over and the other tank was on. But in total, it may be, we'll say if we were down a full day, because it was the same process putting it back in. Then we had to slurry it in, so.
But once it goes back, once it goes back in, though, you have to do, uh, filter the waste, you know, to clean it. Or backwash it, I should say, first, and then you gotta go filter the waste for a while. And while you're doing both of those operations, you can't be running the plant.
Yeah, right.
Right, so that it's, so there, there's that time when you're going back online, and I thought that was two or three days at four or five. But I, I gotta.
You know, I'll have to check on that, I don't, I don't recall it being that long, but it may have been.
I'm just wondering, is, should we put something in here that does talk about the seasonality effect or not? That's why.
I can put something in for that.
Alright. Just, we wanna say something like, un- unless, um. I don't know. Unless, unless extraneous circumstances present themselves, or I don't know what. Kind of wanna leave it, you know, but. I don't know that we would hold off on it, if it's only gonna be a matter of days in the middle of the summer, maybe we just proceed with it, you know?
Yeah.
It must be a procedure to break a policy, right, for a good reason? Did you just use whatever that is?
I mean, it is just a policy, it's not. Like a, not like a regulation, you know?
Right, it was more of a. The policy was really. The policy was really, I guess, to, to drive when we did the change out, I included all the, you know, the steps. In it, just to.
It's called the media change out guidelines policy, and you've got all the great one.
That might, it's probably not a bad idea, just call it a guideline.
Yeah, I'm wondering if policy does get you into any kind of legal, legal bind.
I'm fine with calling it a guideline.
Actually, in your first, uh, sentence for purposes, it says to establish guidelines.
There we go. So then in Roman number two, Roman numeral two, you can just change that to say guideline.
Instead of policy.
Yeah.
Guideline.
I just, run this by, run this all by Carrie after and just see, ask her if there's any like obligation, did we already do this once with her? Ask her if there's like, if this obligates us to have to do this, or if it's just a, uh. Just an internal thing that we want to implement.
More for the.
I was thinking of something else that I think.
No, that, yeah, but we did, it was. Annual meeting, the vote on the. If we need to go non-detect or.
Oh, if we were, oh, yeah, and she said to do it as a guideline or a policy instead of making it like an annual meeting vote.
No, I thought we went to Carrie if we were, if the, the vote, how it. If it was gonna dictate how we change out the media, and I think she said it. Correct, right?
Yeah. Alright, anything else in here? Cause, um, I didn't see anything else that's too much of an issue.
No, I was finding the rest of it.
Yeah, I mean, the only comments I have, we already talked about, is the time lag and the time it takes to schedule and everything, but, but, um. Oh, um. The only other change is we're calling out PFBA here, because normally that is the first breakthrough, but. Do we want to just say the breakthrough of the first PFAS compound?
I think so.
Yeah, I think that's how initially, uh, it might have been in a minutes that way. And, um, PFP EA comes through pretty quickly after PFBA, so. I don't know, I'm just saying, if, if we get some weird thing that happens and it's not PFBA, it's something else. I think the intent, what we're doing is try to have non-detect, to the maximum extent practical of all PFAS. So maybe we should just refer to the first breakthrough of PFAS compound or something.
That's fine, I, and I, I, I think we will be FBA into their juicy.
It is, it's probably is gonna be what it is, but in case it's not. So, yeah, so I think everything else is fine, I didn't see anything here that, uh. The rest of it, like you said, is more like procedure, which is like an operation thing anyway, so.
You want to put in time, a timeframe for repeat sample?
Um, actually, yeah, why don't you, uh, you know, I guess say something about, um. Upon detection of a PFAS breakthrough, we will. You know, collect another, uh, confirmate, confirmatory sample. So in other words, we don't have to wait like a whole month, because.
Right.
I think that makes sense.
And it kind of does say that down here, but we, it was during our normal testing, but yes, I'll change that up.
Alright.
But I, I don't have the charts in front of me, but, uh, PFBA. Um, how fast did that break through the lead vessel and the lag vessel?
I want to say it broke through the lead, a fresh lead vessel in eight months.
Oh, in eight months, okay, yeah.
Well, that's why I'm saying, it's, it's probably gonna break through, it's probably gonna, you're probably gonna detect PFBA in the very first sample. Of the lag vessel.
Yeah, and it was that, there was that breakthrough detection of it or, or, uh, passing regulation?
Well, it's nowhere, it's not even regulated, so.
Or the BA is not.
No.
Okay, you're right, okay.
Yeah.
But yeah, it's, it sounds like your policy is just gonna, you know, because once you, once you don't have a fresh vessel. You know, it sounds like you're gonna be pretty much changing out every month, yeah.
Yeah, which kind of matches what we're budgeting, so.
And then that will be easier to follow, you know, so you, now you were like, okay, you know, you were mentioning, well. You know, you're, you tested and you tried to plan it for the eighth month, but maybe it goes ninth month or tenth month or something like that, but I think. You know, once you're starting to, if you change that to having any PFAS coming through, it's gonna be pretty much eight months, then you can. Do a better job planning it, I guess, you know, than meeting your policy.
Yeah. Uh, so I, I mean. We have the flexibility to do it more frequently, it was eight months. I think, I think you're right, I think we'd have to get two new fresh loads of media all over again before we. Or, or rejuvenate both lead and lag vessels. Before we would go less, uh, we'd have breakthrough at later than eight months.
Yeah.
So. But this works either way, you, you know? I think this works either way.
Sounds good.
Alright. But this video is gonna be quick.
What the hell made you think that?
I don't know, all of the.
And then actually, would I, can I throw one more thing, and I don't want to make it more complicated, but.
Yeah.
If you're going eight months and, um. And you're, the eight months, just say you change it out in, uh. September, right, and then your eight months carries you to April, so that's carrying you through. The, you know, sort of quote, quote, eight lowest flow months, you know? And then, so if you're doing that and you have PFAS treatment at all three of your plants. And you're not getting hardly any bed volumes through though, you know, does it change it? Does it, does it change that, that thought, you know? Cause you were thinking eight months, a- as you were looking at the data from four, five, that was flowing twenty-four, seven. You know, right, you know, for a long time, now, you know, going through the winter. Lot of these plants, especially the two nine plant, is gonna be shut down for easily a half a day, right? So are you, are you, you know, possibly, you know, do you want to. Attach it to more bed volumes if you can do that compared to months, I don't know, you know, I just, you know what I'm saying?
Well, I do, but I mean, the, the goal here still is to try and get. No PFAS in the finished water. And if there's still capacity left for the other chains that haven't broken through yet. Maybe that's an opportunity for us to catch up on the, uh, lag vessel for once. You know?
Yeah.
I don't know, I think if we're budgeting for eight months.
I'd much rather go by, not by volume, but by.
By what's in the effluent, really, I think it's by what's, the whole, the whole reason we're doing this is because we're concerned about what's in the effluent.
Yeah.
Not, not necessarily maximizing. The runtimes.
Yeah. So then the operator should kind of be looking at, um, PFAS results also, how the, how they plan on operating the system, so if. Right, would, would that be something that they would be considering as, as which supplies to be using at any one time? Would you want to be using the ones with the lowest PFAS and, or? Or these be just sort of cycling, you know, be sort of cycle every month, but you would have it sort of, everything staggered, so what we. You would be changing out something every month or something.
That's probably the more operational, uh, consideration is making sure they don't all occur in the same. Month or two, have that stack a little bit.
Yeah.
I think we just proceed with this, and then if, if we need to pull back on something in the future, then we will.
Well, this is not, not something we're have to vote on, so it's just, it's something a working document, bad things go, we can adjust as we need.
Second, same thing, as we get into it and we start. Running the, the plants a little bit differently, and they're not all, you know, working as hard as they've been working. Um, yeah, if it seems like it's, it makes sense to change it at eight months, then, you know, that's what I.
Alright, so are we good to move on?
Yes.
Well, it's still today.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna sign off then.
Alright, thanks, Pete.
Have a good night.
See you tomorrow, Pete.
Yeah, alright, bye bye.
Alright, so back to item two, commissioners to recap procedure for the annual meeting scheduled for March twenty-eighth. Uh.
Carrie did that.
Brian's gonna read off the, um, or you're gonna check and see if we even need to read them, I guess?
Yes.
Yep, alright, and assuming we do, he'll, he's reading everything.
Either way.
Direct the questions to me and I'll decide who can answer, that deal?
Nope.
Alright. Um, plan review policy. Third reading of that.
I think I've done everything in there that, that was.
Yeah. Is, uh. Think I had any comments on that, looked it over, looked fine. That didn't change, right, that was the same, you didn't give us an update on that today, that was.
Nope, that was, that was in the pack, that was everything with the change that, uh. From the last meeting.
Right, so, um, any questions, anybody?
No.
Alright. We don't need to take a vote on that at all, or we're, uh, we do, we'll go back, we'll wait for John to come back.
How about we jump on the minute that John was absent at the mid, uh, the end last minute? No, seriously, he wasn't here.
So that means we, we can approve them anyways.
Yeah, there's only two of us, right?
Right.
So we gotta table the minutes.
We're tabling the minutes. We voted without. Right, alright, so who was here?
Well, John wasn't here.
Doesn't matter if he.
Oh, no.
They looked into it and they said it.
You don't have to, you don't have to be present at the min, the meeting to approve the minutes, like, even though John wasn't here, you could still vote to approve.
Actually, it's funny, no, he was here for February twenty-third. But there was two, there's two things here, there's two sets of minutes, that's.
Yeah, one's for the, um.
I'm sorry.
Regular meeting. Oh, yeah, that is John. This is, we were all here.
Yeah.
For the first one, but then there's another one.
That's a first.
And there's another one, public meeting, that must have been at the, public hearing was conducted. On Monday, February twenty-third, there was another one.
Yeah, cause John was electronic, so he couldn't participate in the public hearing, right, is that, is that what happens? Okay.
No, I think it was all electronic. Yeah, he had an emergency, he had to leave.
Oh, yeah, so, oh, yeah, that's right, it was here, I was thinking we went to the other, uh. Went to the little theater, but we didn't.
Any, is there any issues with approving the, the, uh. Plan review policy next meeting? When I, I can actually put in policy numbers and all that, I just, I just knew where they're gonna go, I wanted to.
Yeah, okay, that's fine, if you want to make it finalized, like formal like that, alright, yeah, why don't we do that?
I worry.
But I guess we're giving you the go ahead, that the way it's written is fine.
Yeah.
So what does the public hearing minutes say? Oh, yeah, so John wasn't at the public hearing, so he can choose to approve the minutes, we want to maybe push those off for wolf next month.
Hungary, without, it's put it off the wolf.
Alright. So we, uh, when John gets back, we'll review them, the regular, uh, board meeting minutes. It will table the public hearing minutes. Everybody good with that? And, um. You start going to action items while we're waiting for John to get back. Okay. Alright, so let's just go through these, uh, number two, that's off until April. Action item twenty-three. Uh, that's gonna be in, in May, right, says here in the last column. I know number forty is gonna be, um, tabled, that's tabled. Salt mitigation committee meetings. Anything on that, did you talk to, uh, Jamie about anything? Um. Um. Not necessarily just on number forty-three, but there was some other items, like. If there's nothing on number forty-three, we'll, we'll just, we'll go, we'll get to the other ones after. Uh, so number forty-six, a future public event policy, I know that one's gonna be, um. Discuss, I think, next month, April. Forty-seven, we're looking at a June work session on that one.
I did get an email out to Keith to start working on some dates for that.
Yeah, alright, good. Uh, number forty-nine, work session again, that's in June, so number forty-seven, forty-nine, are we trying to do those together?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, the PTO looks like where, um, Michelle said she was gonna. Try to address that next month, right?
Yeah, with what was here.
Face.
Want to change that?
I'll change that to April.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, create a policy for fifty-six and fifty-seven. Discuss update during March meeting. Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, okay. So, what do we want to do with number fifty-six, say that that's coming back in April? Cause that can play on review policy, basically. And fifty-seven. Alright.
April for those.
Yeah, yeah, so change fifty-six and fifty-seven to April meeting. Uh, okay, number fifty-eight, mineral graphs, those are, uh. Yeah, you said those weren't ready yet, right? Okay. Alright, let's, uh. Yeah, change that to March.
April.
I mean, I'm sorry. Okay, fifty-nine, that's in April as well.
Yeah.
It'd be a busy meeting. Alright, number sixty.
So I emailed. Again, with the, was it Wolf that gave?
Yeah, I think Wolf.
Gave me the.
No answer?
No answer, I, so I sent to, to Lou and Jeff. Lou's email bounced back on me, um, so I don't know if it's, obviously it's.
Yeah, he's not good anymore or something, yeah.
Jeff's didn't, but I haven't heard from any either of them, so.
Okay. I guess leave it up there, we'll, uh. Kick it away some point if no one's getting back to us. Uh, sixty-seven about move, uh, inquire with DOT about moving the salt sign closer to exit ten, any follow up on that?
I haven't, I, and I gotta give Jamie on that, because I thought he was, he was trying to set up some sort of a meeting, so that would.
Right? Yeah, I think that's what we said last month, if you want to try to, um. Get with him and, uh. Put that to bed, hopefully. Uh, investigate, number sixty-eight, investigative funding is available for AR and Mitchell Woods. Probably something else you want to go over with Jamie or something too.
We actually, we had a meeting, so we put in for a grant for the additional roadwork. Uh. The two routes that didn't get approved under the grant for the, for the.
Private connections.
Private wall PFAS extensions, and we put in for Mitchell Woods as well, for, for the.
That's in the packet, right? I'm sorry, no, it's not. What was the grant in the packet, there's something else.
Yeah. Okay, that was the, uh.
Watershed assistance. So we're doing a sediment chloride watershed protection area plan, which. The ES kind of stairs geared us into, because we aren't gonna fly for it, but they had a template and they wanted us to do this. So it's gonna be template for the rest of the state.
Awesome, who's, uh, who's that with, was that Amy or Brandon or, you met DS? I like how they kind of like reach out to us.
They do.
You must, that's, that's awesome.
It was, uh, Pierce.
Oh, okay. Okay, yeah, yeah.
Oh, good, then there was somebody else in power, but it was, yeah, there were. If it's approved, like again, it's. It's approved, that it would be the first one, the state and EPA jointly.
Now, which one's this?
That's the salt.
Okay, alright.
This is the one at number nine.
Oh, this year?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, um, so AR and Mitchell Woods, what were you saying on that one that?
So we applied. The grant through the county.
Oh, alright, we did, okay.
So we did apply. And it was the, the two remaining um.
Extensions.
As well as for Mitchell Woods, so we did apply for a grant on that.
But not artificial recharge, or was it artificial?
I didn't have any information at times, so Jamie's gonna give us.
Okay. Alright.
Once we, once we get that from, from Jamie, what, you know, the.
Yep.
Looking at funding for that as well.
Yep. Okay, so let's leave sixty eight on there. See if we can uh. Move forward on any, uh, see what the outcome is on that was, I guess. Sixty nine, more granular breakdown of actual cost savings of switching to monthly billing. You know.
Michelle had mentioned moving that to April because Amy was out.
Right, okay. Yeah, why don't you do that, that sounds good, Amanda?
Okay.
Uh, written policy for media change out. To March meeting, that's.
It's a free book as well on that, that's what you had tonight.
Yep. Why don't we leave, uh, why don't we change that or change that to April, if that's gonna be the final um. We're gonna, we're gonna approve this at the April meeting, the media change out? Or am I thinking of the plan? I'm thinking of the wrong one. Okay.
This one, we may need another reading. I'll, I'll get a.
So seventy one we'll leave on there, we'll, we'll put that on the April agenda, there'll be a lot going on in April. Put some of this off, but that's alright, these are just placeholders and nothing, you know. It's about what's the most important that counts. Uh, alright, number seventy two, um, implemented discount for paperless billing. I don't know that we have a target date on that one, let's. Yeah, let's just leave that the way it is right now and revisit that, again, it's just something that we. Go over here to remind us, seventy three, uh, elevated PFOA Turkey Hill Road.
So I, I did look at that, um. It looks like it's a, it, it might be a bad sample, but we did have, um. So we were running. One of the. All the walls that were, so four five, four five were on, seven and eight were on. Pennachuck interconnect was on. Well, two was on intermittently. Only because. That was more of a, a demand driven, um, so if we didn't need it, it was off. I went back and looked at well. Well, two. On the nineteenth, that's when the Turkey Hill sample was taken. Ten nineteen, that was seventeen point two is what we're looking at, well, two was on the nineteenth, but that had a. PFOA was at twenty nine point five.
Right.
Nine twenty. So going back, uh, was, was on as well. And it was twenty point five, and if you go back. The last time before that it was sampled was seven twenty seven. And it was ten point six, I don't have any recordings after that, that was in the system. At well two. Well, two was on ten three through ten six. Ten eleven through ten fifteen, ten eighteen, ten twenty two, and after that, it's been. Off until today.
Definitely could be coming from well two.
It could. So I almost think it was a bad sample as well because PFO, uh, PFOA was seventy point two. But the PFAS, uh, uh, PFOS was fifty point two, we've never had that. In any of our samples comes from any of the wells at fifteen. We've always been down like two. Two parts for trillion, you know, like two and three. So. It could be, I mean. As far as PFOA, it could be. A, a good number, but I'm leaning on, I mean, there's some, some blend there to go. Uh, it should have blended down a little bit, but that piece of the PFOS numbers totally off.
Yeah.
And with that being said, uh, we said it to the last meeting. It was. Low on either, you know, when we're doing the, the uh. Sampling out the system. It was, that was the highest, it was in a drop right back, I think it was not a tech the following.
Alright.
Or the, the, the fall, the next time we sample out there, so. So I.
Yeah, that's, that's, that sounds like a good explanation to me, um. Do we want to take seventy three off the list, or um, I don't think there's any more follow up that we need on it, or. Let's you guys feel like there is or. Seventy three, Amanda, you can um. Take that, put that off the current list.
Okay. And Michelle had discussed adding to the agenda. For April and May, she wanted to add a rate discussion for April. And then she asked about adding a re, a review system for the capital reserves. Looking at the capital improvement plans and industry info, and then. The system for the unassigned fund balance, and she was looking to add that for April or May.
Okay, so. Do we want to make those action items?
Let's make an action item.
Yeah.
And we're gonna talk from. A week before the, couple weeks before the meeting, although what. Look how the agenda is going, maybe we wanna.
Okay.
Decide whether to push something off.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So those are three of them there that you basically mentioned, right?
Um, I have two, she coupled the capital reserves and the unassigned fund balance as one.
Okay. So why don't you make those two? Next action items.
Okay.
Whatever, seventy four, seventy five, if those are the next numbers.
Yep.
And um. If you want to say, what did she say that they were gonna be talked about? In April?
Um, the rate discussion, she like discussed in April, and then. The other one where the system review for capital reserves and unassigned fund balance in either April or May.
Okay. I don't care which one you want to put, I know there's a lot going on in April. That's fine. That's fine. Alright, good, so I think those are all the action items that we. Talked about, right? Nothing else anybody remembers to add? So where are we here?
The minutes.
Plan review. Uh, yeah, so the minutes, um, so John, we figured out. The minutes. Think what we want to do is we want to look at approving the regular meeting for the minutes, um, from February. Twenty third, was it?
Yeah.
Uh, everybody was here, all five of us.
Someone had to leave early. Yeah, he didn't even.
Six minutes. Oh, that's right, you did, well, I hope early in there, uh, it's like the first thing in the minutes, um. Do you want, you want to table both of them then? Yeah, alright, why don't we table both of them, I guess? We were just talking before about technically you still can approve them if you want, but. You don't, you don't have to be present in order to approve them. But. It's not legally required that that's the case, it's just something we've been like.
I would just be remembering that I saw there were some minutes.
Pretty much, so kind of makes sense.
Yeah, I don't know if it's such a priority that we need to do that.
No, but I, I don't think so, I mean, they're posted, uh, we have them here, if, if someone asks for them, that's the main reason, you know, we have them done. So let's, let's uh, table both of those. And um.
Or into old business.
Yes. Old business, any old business, anybody?
I have a note from our last meeting. That the, it was a questionable one when uh. Well, seven eight treatment plant went online.
Okay.
I don't remember for, now that I'm. But it was April forty seven.
Okay. I think I had. There was something Paul mentioned last time about, um, does the water availability letter from MBD get included in the project file? And plans with the, with the community development?
So I did check on that, so another thing I was gonna. It does go into the file. But for the, for it to be enforced. We need to go via, if we build on the plan.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So it would just be the timing. It can be in our meeting and. Where they go to planning board. And then. We get their numbers. And if they're not addressed at that point, then we'll leave, we'll issue them, uh. Comments to the planning board, we can actually. Something, say, you know, it's noted on the plan, so.
So I also wonder if, if on the, if they make. We don't have the numbers by the time the plan gets submitted, that there's a note on the plan that says. Uh, water allocation subject to the. Approval of MBD. Uh, the allocation approval or something like that. I'm just wondering if, if it's like the town's using it as a reason they don't, they wouldn't want to enforce it. So it's not on the plan, sorry. You know, cause it makes their life easier. So I'm just saying, if, if maybe we should have the town make every applicant put on their plan. That water supply shall be, um. In accordance with. Approval, allocation approval from MBD or something like that.
Yeah.
You want to, you want to, um, talk to, um. Tim? Who did you talk to?
I talked to Robert. Yeah, I can.
You know what I mean?
I'll go with, I'll go with him and get some language.
Find out what the best way to go about that is if, if, because we may not have like the actual. Would, would they, would, I don't even know if the planning board would approve a plan if, if MBD hasn't actually. Sent the letter that says that we have the water supply available. Is that something they usually wait for?
They do.
I think it is, right?
So they'll. I'm trying to go, it's worded, it was worded in the past, and I don't, you know, but I'm not a hundred percent if the plan was approved at that point.
I'm, I'm just not sure if the town's gonna make the applicant, would they hold off? On their approval until the applicant revises his plan? I have a feeling the town wouldn't do that.
I think it was approved.
I don't think they're gonna wait for us.
They didn't, but it, but they actually put some wording in there that was, that basically they had to follow. Whatever we.
Yeah.
Uh, whatever we need, uh. Not restrictions, but. Basically, we came up with.
What our allocation.
Allocation are, and if, if. They need the extension or anything like that, they would have to. Do that kind of stuff.
Alright.
And I just, I can't think of a word to get off the top of my head, but they use, but.
Alright, um. We'll do that, I think that was all I had. New business? Yeah, anybody have a new business?
Sounds good, right? Superintendent report?
Also, we've, we've already gone over in other parts, um. One, I think, the cost, uh, cost of the caustic soda, the two drums was, uh. Been like eighteen hundred dollars. Do a, to do both vessels if we choose to do both.
Oh.
But if we fully do with the one that is better, about nine hundred forty three dollars. It costs, I think, to take us to that treatment.
Okay. That's not bad, I think we should plan on that.
Yeah, I, I didn't think it was bad at all.
Yeah.
They came off, uh, to see, Barry Miller has been on site. Uh, since three ninety property structure started cleaning on three ten. He's still out there. Still working on the cleaning of seven and eight, we're also having them service.
He's doing both or just one?
I'm sorry, I said seven and eight, he's doing seven this.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
He was just done.
Yeah, I remember you saying it with, you're kind of trying to get those off seasons for the.
Yep. But it just always seems to work out that way, if we had them do both, you. Getting called out, a way to do some other emergency, we. We always lose on the other end there.
Okay.
Or puts it towards very close to where it could be online. That they're also doing, we're also having the high lift pumps from the Clearwell service as possible, we're alternating those, we're gonna get those done. Sorry. And. That's it.
Alright. I had a couple other things, but we'll put them off the next meeting. Good. Motion adjourn. Do adjourn by John.
Don't you have to ask if there's any question from the public?
I do. Good thing you're running the meeting, otherwise. And we have to do it all over again. If we don't see anybody, uh, anywhere in the waiting room or anything like that. Alright, no, uh, questions from the press or public, motion by John to adjourn.
Second it.
Second by Ken, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, three zero zero, no oppositions, no extensions. Uh, the March, annual meeting on March twenty eighth. Seven o'clock at the high school.
Jamie's.
Jamie was. Oh, okay. Alright, good, we'll see everybody there.